I'm going to call the April 4th, 2017 meeting of the Norton Planning Board to order, and all members are present this evening. First item on the agenda is reported by the Planning and Economic Development Director. Thank you. Just a note on the top here, full-size plans and hard copies are always available in our office. I'm trying to avoid giving you copies of all the bulky reports in your binders, so for the amended order conditions that is mentioned for rider truck and any other full-size documents, I have them right here if you want to see them. Discussion items tonight, we're going to be talking about modification to 454 special permit on rider truck 60 Commerce Way, so it's under Tab B of your binders. There's a review as far as the one, the first page of the amended wetland permit and some plans. That's gone through Conscom at this point. Woodlark Park is under Tab C of your binders, that'll be the second discussion item, and that is, there's no formal application, it's an informal discussion of parking. And then the current applications we'll be hearing tonight, those are Norton Self-Storage, which is under Tab 1 of your binder, there is a review from our department, and six attachments, so be careful to check all those out. The initial hearing was March 7th, and it's been continued to tonight. And then the second hearing for tonight is East Hodges Shared Driveway, which is under Tab 2 of your binders, including a review and four attachments. Plans have been revised and submitted since the initial hearing on 37, they've been revised to reflect deep wells rather than a water main loop. Next page is just issuance of findings and conditions, 46 Commerce Way, NOAA offices, the appeal period has ended, so we're waiting for the applicant to pick that up. Previously permitted projects such as New England Ice Cream and Wheaton Solar, we are still talking about going out during the planting season to check out those sites. So some other planning news, our town elections are coming up, 4/25, town meeting will be held on May 8th at 7:00 PM at the high school. The Planning Board report to town meeting summarizing issues heard at the March 21st zoning hearing will be issued to the town moderator next week for discussion at town meeting. The Board of Selectmen did get just a summary of the report from that meeting, too. We're also saying goodbye to some longstanding board members soon, and we weren't sure if we were going to have a meeting after this, so just, I just want to say thank you on the behalf of the Board to Joanne and Pat, their cards in your binders, thanking you for your dedicated service.
Thank you very much. Not quite swan song yet, I think we have one more meeting, but I'll take it. And then, save the four goodbyes for the last one. The speech, the speech for the last one. Too much on the agenda tonight, actually.
Yeah. One more thing is that we have a recording secretary, we'll be looking for a recording secretary for the Board, is a part-time position, I'll be posting it on the town website shortly. It's eight hours, at about 14 and change an hour, so if any interested applicants can contact me at Town Hall. And we are still updating our communication stream at Twitter, Facebook, and our blog, which is all available off our town website for the Department. Some upcoming workshops and trainings include a Norton Complete Streets planning kickoff, we'll be having that in May, a Regional Economic Development Forum, April 28th, and it's sponsored by the Tri-Town Chamber, and I'll be speaking there, I'll have more details to come, and a housing workshop in Devens, which will be a great opportunity to hear more about how that all works, June 6th and 7th.
Where's Devens?
I don't know. Fort Devens, the redevelopment name is Devens. Shirley Air and Harvard.
Yep, Fort Devens.
Yep. Public hearing at 7:25, but I think we should probably take 60 Commerce Way, rider truck.
Good evening again, Mark Tib with Condy Engineering Group, bringing you up to date on the project. We did receive our amended order of conditions for, from conservation for the proposed 80,000 square foot building. Basically, that's the main update for the project, just seeking the approval of amending the existing special permit and site plan review we already had to the new plans that we've submitted and have, you know, have had submitted with the Planning Board.
So, I think we discussed most of the issues, but can you just explain where things ended up with the Conservation Commission in terms of the site plan?
Not a lot, like layout-wise changed. We added a small chain link fence around the vernal pool in the back of the site, there's a vernal pool here, we added a chain link fence that would help catch any debris and things like that. We got through the remainder of the consultant's comments, just on the drainage, just miscellaneous comments on the drainage design, you know, for as far as meeting the stormwater management Really, there hasn't been any layout changes recently that affected the site at all. You know, we moved a basin from up here over here, made all the drainage requirements meet around this vernal pool that was onsite, and it's basically where we stand with the conservation changes.
Do we have the most recent set of plans, or would that?
Yep. So the Department review for this project is attached to, should be the first thing you got. And it lists the background of the history of the project, site plan approval, any waivers they're requesting, and they are requesting a couple waivers. There's a couple of issues that still remain that would be a potential condition, and there are conditions of approval and previous conditions of approval to be evaluated on pages 4 and 5.
So in terms of the waivers, I believe we voted on those, correct?
The lights.
The lights?
Yep.
I think we, would the waivers be part of the original? Part of the original?
Yep. Correct. Yep, the scale and the lighting.
Right, that was part of the original.
Correct.
So we don't need to re-vote those?
Don't need to re-vote those, then.
The only, the only thing we needed was the change in the overall site plan, which we have discussed, and then we needed consistency with the Conservation Commission plans.
Correct, and there's a couple other notes regarding, containing leaks on the property, they're proposing to put a full shut-off valve marked with signage on the property. Regarding where truck repairs and parking shall occur, there's the suggested conditions there. A dumpster is now shown on an enclosed concrete pad, and then the fire department did still have a few comments. Mark spoke with David Miles a couple days ago, and we're incorporating those as a condition to put another hydrant to the rear right corner of the building, and a post indicator valve shall be clearly marked in the plan and installed.
Now, the shut-off valve for the fuel, is that, is that before or after a sump? Do you have a sump in there?
There, there's individual sumps at the pumps themselves, you know, that you see on any gas station.
Yep.
Then you have the pad, the concrete pad that you always see around the gas stations as well, and then just the area associated with that drainage goes to a deep sump catch basin first, and then as it's piped, you know, to the next manhole, there's a shut-off valve in between.
Okay.
That can allow the, a massive spill to puddle up on the ground versus getting into the infiltration basin.
So how big is that sump after, or before the shut-off valve?
It's a standard catch basin, four-foot deep sump. I don't know the gallonage of those off the top of my head, but it's a, you know, it's a four-foot diameter manhole with a four-foot sump. It's got the hood on it so that the oil will float above it.
Right.
You know, and get that separation. And then just daily treatment, there's, it goes through that as well, through the manhole system, through what they call a storm scepter.
Yep.
Which also has capacity for separating out oils as well as the sediment, and then from there it goes into the infiltration system. So it's basically got two forms of sump as well for just daily runoff.
And the storm, stormwater system was reviewed by the Conservation Commission?
Thoroughly, yes.
And I have the full document.
When are you hoping to break ground?
Soon. We're hoping to marry the two projects, the NOAA project and this project together in the upcoming weeks, basically. We've submitted a building permit application for NOAA, and then this one's following soon We're aware we can move a little dirt without it. In fact, the 60 Commerce one has been cleared, and it's got, it's been in a state of partial construction for almost a year and a half now, under our existing order of conditions and permits.
So the other questions or comments by board members here?
No, as long as Conservation Commission is, you know.
That's what we were waiting for, for consistency with their view. So we have, we have, we'll have to issue another set of conditions for the revised plan, so there's attached here, a series of conditions. So, probably should just go over them quickly. The first one was that the Conservation Commission order of conditions shall become part of the special permit approval. The requirements by the deputy chief, this was the issuing, the condition that plan should be revised according to a swept path analysis to cover another hydrant, we record the building, and a post indicator valve shall be clearly marked on the plan. We have asked all development in this Commerce Way to have trucks enter via the southerly approach to Commerce Way to avoid trucks on South Washington Street. And also requesting that the Planning Board's consulting engineer be contacted prior to installation of drainage structures. In this case, how does this relate to the Conservation Commission? They didn't have any requirements for onsite review of drainage, did they? We don't want to be duplicating conditions of...
I don't believe they stated a specific person.
Yeah.
But we do plan, even though we had a pre-construction meeting with them, first time, we plan to do it again.
Right.
Because the site contractor may change, so.
I recommend we keep this condition then, from the Planning Board perspective. Any final plans, any, which when incorporating changes be submitted to the Planning Board prior to issuance of building permits? Other conditions, clearly marked shut-off valve for any fuel storage? The number of truck parking spaces? No outdoor storage of parts or outdoor truck repairs, no storage of unregistered vehicles onsite. Construction shall be in accordance with the plans that were dated October 10th, 2016 through January 26th, 2017, and then revised for the few items in this condition. Site lighting in accordance with our lighting bylaw.
This is a, just a trickier one, because the order of conditions, because the vernal pool area needs natural lighting for the frogs, I worked that out with her, that, and I believe you did as well, that it would be dark sky compliant in that area, but allow for safe travel.
Okay.
Because we...
They're on a 20-foot pole.
In that area, it's no greater than half-foot candles.
So our bylaw requires dark sky compliant anyway, or zoning bylaw? So this is just the requirement for the 0.5-foot candle?
Between the hours of 11:00 and 6:00 PM.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's all signs constructed, according to bylaws.
I'm sorry, but between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM or 6:00?
6:00 AM, right?
6:00 AM, yes.
Others are standard, K and JR, standard common condition items. Any other conditions from the Board's perspective? It's just not officially a public hearing, it was a modification of the special permit, so we don't have to vote to close the hearing, but we do have to take a vote on the request to modify the special permit and site plan?
Sure. If we modify the permit and site plan per the recommendations outlined.
For these conditions? Second? Second, okay. I'll take a vote then. Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Mr. Jozick?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
I'll also vote yes.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Thank you. We do have a continuation, we're going to go to our public hearings now, because we have those noticed for 7:25, a little bit late there. We have a public hearing for special permit for 68, for 368, 316 East Main Street, Norton Self-Storage, continued from March 7th.
Nicely done.
Good night.
Norton Self-Storage. It's a continuation of a modification of the two permits. Since the last meeting that we had in March, we have received the outside consultant, beta engineer, and they made some observations, and I can go over, I'd like to go over them if that's possible.
Okay.
Give you that. The only other thing that's, we're still continuing working with the fire department and the building department, but that's pretty much, almost wrapped up at this time on the building side of it. As far as on data, you have the beta report in front of you, I hope?
That's the attachment 2, it has a 2 in the corner.
Mm-hmm. I'd like to start on page 2 of 12, the first bullet where it says Building A and E, it's like, I told you before, one I would like to modify is that the buildings are pitched off, not into the center of the property, they're pitched on the outside of the property. It is our intention to construct the vegetated swales in accordance with the landscape plan that we had submitted and dated April 5th, 2016. We will demonstrate the calculations concerning the runoff that is handled through the swales, and that there will be no additional runoff to the adjacent properties, and as hope that this could be handled through an administrative process followed with, up with beta. It's our desire that the April 5th plan, 2016 plan be part of the decisions as amended. Just to give you a little update on this, the previous planning department planner really didn't give us, we didn't have permission to do the landscaping, because we wanted to modify it. We wanted to get the property stabilized, so we did start the landscape project over out there. And what you see is really what probably 80% done. There are a few things that aren't done on it, but we thought it was better for the neighborhood and to our property to at least do some landscaping. So that's why the swales were semi-done, but not done according to the plan. We do want to do them according to the plan as presented. We were, we'd be more than happy to have Beta come back again, or another representative from the town to verify that we did it according to the plan. If you read their observation, they don't have an opinion one way or the other, they're just really saying that it wasn't completed as per the plan.
When do you expect that to be completed?
Well, we'd like to, we're asking for you to approve our landscape plan, so we did go ahead and do probably 80% of this plan without any permission. We'd like to do the other 20% with your permission, I guess. So we'd like to do it quickly, it's obviously, we did it in the fall, now's the time to finish up, you know, so shortly, if it stops snowing or raining here, we'd be happy to finish up the project, all right? And we'd be happy to have Beta come back to verify that we did it according to the plan. We'd like to have that handled, hopefully administratively, with the town planner or the building commissioner, however the Board views that. All right, and if you go through, they're numbered, the two bullet here, the concrete sidewalk, I would like to, it has to do with the handicap ramp and handicap parking spot, that was brought up before. I do have a letter here from Steve Hayes, which is our architect of record, and he's here tonight also, but I'd like to present his response to that, if that's possible, if I can bring that to you today, tonight.
It's included in your packets as number?
Do you already have it? Because I have extra copies.
It's the last thing, because I just got it right before.
I would also like to, I can go over it, we can, if you read it, if you have any questions about it, we'd be happy to answer the questions. It's kind of a, more of a building inspector's response to it, it's more of a technical thing. I'm responding to it too, because Beta brought it up, and I think somebody from the Board brought it up last time I was here. So, it's our response to it. If you have any questions about it, we'd be happy to try to answer the questions, if you have any...
Do you have the, a plan in front just to illustrate where this is?
It was submitted, but I do have one copy of the bigger size plan.
You have it on our plans here?
It's the...
That's the original.
I have a March 9th, 2017, that's the landscape plan, but if you'd like, I could give you, we do have other copies of this plan that I'm holding up here.
Yeah, it just, we have it.
That's the plan we're having.
It's hard to read, but it's, the handicap ramp, if you face the office with your back to the road, it's on the left-hand side, right by the gate entrance.
Okay. Idea.
If we pass this, we have to... I do have an eight and a half by 11 that's all ratable.
Oh. Favorably.
Do you need anything?
Well, let's, let's talk about one issue at a time, because there's a lot of that here, so let's, the handicap ramp in front of us. Who certifies compliance, though? Is that a building inspector would have to do that?
It is normally a building inspector's decision.
Well, in looking at the zoning bylaws, any change or modification to a plan the building inspector should sign off on, which would mean that a building inspector would inspect to see if it was built in accordance to CMR 780.
Right.
And CMR 521, which is ADA, the building requirement, so I think we've skipped that? The applicant, may I have skipped that?
You may have skipped the review of this plan by the building inspector.
Correct. And installed the handicap ramps as they have.
Okay. And...
We have shown this to the building commissioner, and he hasn't had any objections to what our, this plan has been out there for, since the beginning of this year. We did revise it on the 19th, just the additional hydrant and the well, that was the only two additions on that March revision plan. This plan has been actually out there for a year.
I have no formal comments from the building inspector.
Right. But he needs to sign off on the building permit regardless, so that's one of the things on his list.
If it's not in compliance with ADA, then you can't get the building permit.
Right. He would, he would make us change it, and if it was a big, a major modification, we'd be back for it. But it is on our plans that we want to be part of the record, I guess.
So the Board's feeling, is this, is this something related to the building inspector?
Frankly, a little lost. Where is the issue? I see...
The issue is that the...
The handicap space.
The handicap, Tabitha, you can explain better.
Yeah.
So it's moved from...
They, believe they moved the ramp from once, it was planned to be installed on one side of the building.
Okay.
And all the grades associated with it, because it has to be at a certain slope. They've moved it to the other side, which is outside the, the general path of travel for able-bodied people, so that basically puts those that are disabled at a disadvantage. It's not looked upon favorably in law to have a different route, path of travel to the door.
Where was it before? I'm sorry, I see where it is now.
It was on the opposite side of the...
Okay, and it, but am I reading this correctly, that, where does the 5% pitch come in?
I want to defer to Steve Hayes, he could ask it. Steve, you want to come up and...
Ramps need to be less than 5%.
I was just going to say.
It is a covered, a lot of it has to do with the covered porch on it, too, right? Steve Hayes.
Good evening. When I became involved, only been involved with this project for about a year, it's been ongoing for quite a while. The, the access, the barrier-free access to the porch of the building was on the other side of the, was on the right-hand side of the building as opposed to the left-hand side of the building. Through various discussions, lighting, sidewalk construction, trying to make most efficiency of it, we decided to flip it over to the other side. We did have some, obviously not thorough, discussion with the building commissioner, he didn't seem to have an issue with it, so we constructed it the way it is. AAB allows several means of, they have standards with regard to access, pitch, slope of walks, curb cuts. This results in a, about, I was out there this afternoon, I just checked it, it's a little more than a 2% sloped walkway, it's not a ramp. The alternative, and I think we're responding to this because the beta report suggested that it wasn't in keeping with the intent of AAB, I disagree with that. I think it, it does meet the intent, and it meets it with, without the use of a curb cut, which has one in 10 and one in 12 slopes as part of it, and provides access to the building approximately the same length of travel from the location we've shown where it would have been previously. There would have been, the length of the parking space has to be traversed and so forth, so, but I think it's, it's a, it's a suitable, appropriate access to this building from a barrier-free parking space.
The original approved plan, before you got involved, was on the right-hand side of the building?
But it was just as far away, it was, it was another sidewalk that went further away, so it was almost flipped.
You can understand why there's a lot of questions here.
Right.
And this is, and I know you came in on the back end of this.
Right.
Landscaping, 80% done without, you were supposed to come with a landscape plan to us, you never did, you did the landscaping, now this, you know, after a while, just...
Yeah, but we did confer with the building commissioner.
So you have something in writing from him that he was fine with moving it to the left-hand side?
We have nothing in writing, but we did construct it, he has been on the property. We have submitted, the as-built plan that you're looking at was on there over, almost 13 months at this point. We have been dealing with them directly. I did ask about the landscaping and to control the property, and was, and felt it was in the best interest of us and the neighborhood that we controlled that property as far as sand blowing around and all that other good stuff. So yes, I did do some landscaping outside of the permission of the Board, but I did thought it was in the best interest of the neighbors. You heard the neighbors were here last, the other day, they liked the fact that the property was now controlled, I guess. We didn't do 100% of the landscaping, but we did the majority of it with the time and the access that we had. It's, I think if you look at, between the two, you'd have, I can go down the list with it, but it, as landscaping goes, I don't think it totally differs. As far as the ramp goes, it just flipped from one side of the building to the other side. The distance is the same distance as it was on the other approved location. The parking was further away than this here now, so. It's something that we actually could fix, if it was so desired, I don't know what the benefit would be, but I, it's obviously something that could be fixed. There are certain things that were asked before in the modification we can't fix, but this one, if you want it to put literally on the other end of the parking lot, that's where it was. It's the same distance from the front doors, this one is now.
I think the beta report suggested that it be right in front of the front door, which we never had it proposed there.
Yeah.
So that...
That's not impossible either, it would require us putting a ramp in the front of the building.
It's a sloped walkway, no ramps.
Right.
It's got, it's a much, it's a very gentle slope.
Just so that I'm clear, I see the picture on Beta's report where the.
Yes, the yellow.
Parking is. I'm assuming there's a, how do I get there if I'm in a wheelchair, do I have to go to the end of the ramp and then come up?
That's where the.
There's a four-inch lip.
Yeah, that's where the barrier-free parking space is designated, right at the end of that.
Right.
Yeah.
But, in other words, I've got to go.
Where does it start, is what you're asking?
Right. It looks like it's at the end of the, the cement walk.
Yes.
As opposed to being able to go straight in.
You can't go straight in because of the, your, your.
Do they have to?
You know, it has to be so much percentage, you can't just go straight in.
There's a, we have to, there's a four-foot curb around the perimeter of that porch. And if we went straight in, we'd either be pitching the parking lot, or we'd have to put a curb cut into the concrete porch, which would constrain, the porch is six feet clear inside the column, so if we put an ADA curb cut in that porch, it would really kind of, it would constrain the space in front of the door. So, I think in either case, it's better to approach it from one end to the other, just because it gives a user more flexibility in terms of how to approach the doors.
Why isn't there a ramp right in front of the parking area?
The slope doesn't end there.
Well, I understand that, but.
The slope.
That's because of the way it was constructed.
No, 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 it was constructed according to the, to the compliance of the code, meaning we can only have such a ramp. We can't go straight up.
Steep, you know, you're saying if it came in.
Right, you taper it down.
Steep to me to ADA.
The way it's built.
Right.
The original locate, there was, originally there was more parking here than, which was more parking than required by zoning. Originally, there was a parking lot proposed over here, and we discussed, that area has been constructed in the sense that it's been graded, but it's not our intent to pave this, just because if there's a demonstrated need, we have the right, we have a place to put more parking. But at this point, we don't anticipate that. So, initially, it was over here, we decided it would be better over here. And we submitted these drawings, and the building inspector didn't speak directly to this issue, he just kind of acknowledged the fact that we turned it in. I believe the Beta report wants it right in the middle, and. But we didn't get the Beta report until long after that was constructed.
I think what the Beta report is getting at is that it would like to see, according to MAB requirements, that this path of travel for everyone is the same, so is there any way that you could make
Well, every.
general public path of travel is the same?
Nothing's always the same, I mean, it's, it's, you don't want it to be further away.
I think it's reasonable access to the building, and every, you know, the path of travel technically is different from every parking space, but, and we did put it at the end, but we put it at the end because we wanted to provide a sloped walkway which requires less than a 5% slope as opposed to a curb cut, which everybody knows what a curb cut is, or a little steeper, like a 1 in 10 slope. So, it, it just seemed like the reasonable thing to do at the time, we prepared the drawing, we turned it in, and it's been constructed. If it's not acceptable, we can adjust it, but I'm, my position is it's acceptable.
I guess the question is, is this.
Does the building inspector say?
It's the building inspector, or leave it to the building inspector to say it's acceptable or not.
Right, I think we did something, you know, formally from the building inspector.
Well, the occupancy permit will cover all the building items that he needs to sign off on.
If it's not ADA compliant, it can't get an occupancy.
We already have bathrooms inside that are ADD compliant, you know, he's already inspected those, and then there's zero thresholds in the doors, and the doors being 36, blah, blah, blah. So, those are all done, and he, he's signed off on this office building, I mean, he's been all through this building. So, personally, if we could leave it up to the expert, which is the building commissioner, and the enforcement officer in this town. If for any reason he wants a change in it, we would probably either defer to ask, to either have, make a modification and change it, or bring it back to where it was. By flipping it, we didn't go any further or any closer, I don't think we're any further away. We have to put it kind of where it is because to bring a van in and have the, you know, no entry, you know, it's the better spot for a handicap, it's the first spot on the property. Similar to a plaza where you have the handicaps are up front, this is literally the first spot on the plaza versus if on the other original plan, it was down the end, which was the last spot on the property. I don't know, we could sit here all night.
Whether first or last, it's a matter of how far from the entrance.
It would, is exactly the same, though, that's what we're saying, on a ramp, on a sloped ramp.
So, was there to be another sidewalk that was.
Yes.
Extended further than to that end of the parking lot, right?
We omitted some.
Which you did not do, right?
Right, right.
The initial plan called for more parking than was required, and just from an analysis, a functional analysis of the place, it was determined to eliminate those parking spaces that weren't required by zoning. We can still construct them, if there's a need for additional parking, we have the space there to do it.
This is one issue of many, so. Yeah, personally, looking at the pictures, it doesn't look. Complete, you know, it's the opposite side, but not same sort of content of what we had. On the opposite side of the building.
Yeah, as long as it meets ADA code and the building inspector approves it, fine.
Is that, I don't, I don't, I don't think any of us here, looking at these plans, are able to offer judgment of whether it meets ADA or not, so.
Okay.
All right. That's one issue.
All right.
Continue.
Yeah. I don't know if you can get it back.
I think it might be useful for the.
It would be useful, yes.
For the file.
All right, moving along. The next bullet here is the proposed encamp. The report says encamp is not necessary, so that seems fine. Number, the next bullet point, the medium island, we did not construct it, and talking about the 20-foot width entranceway, they're saying it seems to be adequate for two-way traffic. We have checked with the emergency response in the fire department on this, and they're fine with the access to the property. The next bullet point, which is on three of 12, catch basin 1A not constructed, it's because we're not install it, not building that parking lot. No intentions of building that parking lot at this time, so we don't need that catch basin in there. The next bullet point also has to do with the DMH, number three, catch basin, they had no additional comment. It was just, we're switching basins around. The next one is front entrance gates, they get into the, what we have there, we have a six-foot vinyl fence on the front of the property, and on the backside of the property, we have a galvanized fence. Beta's report defers to the preference of the board and location of materials and installed fence. I think in the original conditions, there wasn't any real conditions on the type of fencing that we were having. It was always proposed to be galvanized steel fencing, so the front is.
Vinyl fence in front of the property, which is.
It's a vinyl clad.
Attractive.
Right. So, is there any questions on that?
Questions or issue on the fencing here? I don't have any either.
All right, the next bullet point has to do with what we call, we talked about before, it's about the emergency overflow into the adjacent property. Or, excuse me, the riprap that we have out there now. It is engineered to the 100-year floodplain, and it seems to be working fine, it's rained in the last week, I was out there last week, and I was out there today, there seems to be very little water out back there, so it seems to be working accordingly. It's something that will have to be maintained and looked at accordingly over the course of the years.
So, the issue here is the riprap channel was not constructed?
No, it's for the second, there's a, they called for, one of the plans called for another catch, another pond off the property, onto the adjacent property, which unfortunately, we have no access to.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Was one of the items that we asked to have be modified.
So, this is an infiltration basin?
Yes, but it's, it's fenced in, it's, it seems to be, obviously, it rained, we've been looking at it for a couple of years now, two, a year and a half, I've been looking at it, and I haven't seen, there's actually no water in there.
The original landscape plan set.
It's the same, it's the exact same. We didn't change that part.
We didn't change that part.
So, it's, that, that is all.
So, this was built as approved?
Yes. The only changes we're making is in the front of the building and the sides on the landscape plans. The next bullet proof has retaining, talk about the retaining wall, we have cut down on the number of pavement. Beta notes the reduced pavement area will allow for preferred method of storing snow on previous areas. So, hopefully that is okay. Number 10. This is.
It's back to.
Back to the handicap. I don't know why it's here twice, but it is here twice, but.
That's the same item, right?
Yeah. All right, the last bullet point on three of 12 has to do with the signage on the front of the, the front on the yard. It seems that it is, we did, the sign company did get a building permit for that sign. We have an as-built plan showing where it is, that it meets the setback requirements. It is on in the original location of the original permitted plans. There was a modification two years ago to be over by the entranceway, which we've gone back to, because of the berm and because of the telephone pole, we couldn't construct it as that modified plan, so. We're going back to the original plan, and it seems, according to Beta and our engineer, it's in the spot that was approved. The out.
So, there was a permit for the sign?
Yes.
Right?
Separate permit. There's literally four permits on this property that have to do with four separate parts of the buildings. But anyway, and that was a separate permit.
For the electronic sign?
Yeah. The next bullet on four of 12 talks about the outdoor lighting. We have an improved lighting plan, we didn't construct 100% of that lighting plan. We did mention that, we're asking for a modification of that, or we're just telling you that we did not construct it 100% to where it was approved, I mean, we have less lighting. Hopefully, that is a good thing, but.
So, how, what's installed in terms of lighting, it says it's just representing two pole lights, is that?
Yes, we have two pole lights on the front parking lot, opposite, where those handicap, the handicap, those two pole lights versus four. And in the sense, we're not constructing the other part of the parking lot, there's no lighting over there. They had some lighting in the back, which we're not doing, we have lighting on the buildings.
Will you be indicating a lighting schedule, or how?
No, we're, we basically constructed the lighting schedule as approved, we just didn't build the whole thing, that's, so I could, I could X out what's not built, I guess, I guess, but we're not.
That would be helpful to know what is actually being built, yes.
Well, we built, we just didn't build 100% of that lighting plan, because it was, we thought it was excessive for the neighborhood and for the property.
On the as-built plan?
There's two lights on the as-built.
There's two lights on that as-built plan, and the lights are on the building.
So.
I think we would need an updated lighting plan, though.
Well, it's, it's not, we didn't change the lighting plan. We just didn't.
An updated lighting plan is something that you could ask for.
Yeah.
But it really is, we didn't, we didn't, we're not changing them, they're not in a different location.
I get it, I don't want the plans that we have on file to show that there's, should have been this, and we didn't do that.
Well, what we're doing.
If the as-bills are.
Yeah, they're on the as-built.
They're on the as-built.
We're asking for the as-built plan to be the, the actual plan of record, so in 10 years, somebody could come in and look at this file.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping for, right.
And say, this is the one, and not look at all, there's literally 15 plans in here.
So, what, what's missing, though, the locations here, but not the size and the, and the lumens?
I could probably get those from you, from the electrician, I could get a letter form and do that in letter form, is that possible?
So.
And the, the other departments have looked at these lights, and you've got to remember, we are in a residential neighborhood across the street, we didn't want to really light this thing up.
No, understood, but, you know, with the current two poles that are there, you know, yeah, what's the lighting plan, what's the foot candle readings, you know, that you typically see in a lighting plan?
They are the same as what was on there, it's just, we just only did two of them versus six.
Well, they won't be the same, because if that was showing two additional poles further back.
There are more poles on the left side here.
You know, you got to take that out of the equation in terms of.
There were more on the right-hand side, too.
You want it to, you know.
The parking lot was bigger on the right-hand side, too.
Right, so personally, I understand with, with the neighbors across the street, less light is.
Yeah, no, that's totally fine.
And the other thing is. Let's see it on a plan.
We, it is on our as-built plan, but I will have a letter, if you'd like, a letter from our electrician stating what the, what the lighting, what it is, if that's, if that's.
I mean, typically, you'll see the foot candle readings plotted out according with what lighting is there, you know? Is that?
And the other thing that's probably changed a little bit, I think these LED lighting versus what was in the condenses that were, sodiums that were generally planned, you've got to remember, our lighting plan is probably now almost 11 years old.
Right.
But we will, I can, I can get a letter from the engineer stating whatever, what the lumin, what this candle width and what we're doing.
I think we'd prefer to see it on the as-built plan.
The only two lights we own are on that plan, and I can have the electrician do the, do the lighting thing. To get a lighting engineer involved for two lights is a little, it's hard for us to get to done, to get done. Electrician installed.
Simply a transfer of information from the previous plan.
Yeah, but it's a stamped lighting plan, you know, by a lighting company. I prefer to get it from the electrician who installed them, that's, if that's possible, but if not, I bring a lighting company in.
I mean, you can ask him to do that, we can review that, and if we feel it's acceptable.
All right.
So be it.
That's, that's fine, that's fine with me. That's fine.
Yeah, I don't know all that he's going to show, so we'd have to see that.
Okay.
Tabitha, just if I may ask, all the additional writing that's on this, who's, is that you, just to confirm, yeah?
All right, the fire hydrant, we did add, we did add a fire hydrant to the property, that is shown on the plan, that has been resolved. The last bullet from, has to do with the rain gardens conformed to the guidelines, we can demonstrate that from our landscaper. We do want it to drain within 72 hours or less. It, it has to do more, the grass and some of the vegetation do have to grow before it actually kind of works correctly, so we would like to demonstrate that through, through our landscaper.
What will they do to demonstrate that?
Well, there's a handbook, there's, there's guidelines that they, they do, and we will, square footage, there is not a lot of water, it's in the front of the building where the parking lot was at one time. And it has a lot to do with the landscaping when it grows up, actually, you know, because the landscape is not grown, it's not handling the waters as fast as if it was more mature landscaping, so. The other, the other item is that we are owner-operators of the property, we're not looking for standing water, and we've obviously contracted with the landscaper to build, build the property according to the plan. We'd like to have it built correctly. I'd like to have that, one of those, that item could be administratively worked on with Beta, too. I think that's something that needs to be worked on with one engineer to another engineer.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
So, what, when would we expect to have something like that completed?
Well, we can talk about the, we can have that done in, in, you know, a couple of weeks, but some of it has to be grown, I mean, you have to.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah, so it's an ongoing thing, I think, I think really.
Okay.
It's not. We could actually eliminate.
But there must be some specifications for.
That's what I mean, yeah, they are built according to that, and the designs are built to that. It's just when you're sitting out there now, today, it's.
Yeah, right, yeah, at least to have the design.
I think that's what they're trying to build up, that's what they're trying to say. That's what I read into it anyway, is that you have to pay attention, something to be, pay attention to. That's what I'm saying. It's not a requirement, actually, we put it in and put it on the plan for, for what we thought was a good idea. We can eliminate it and put the parking lot back in, but, you know, I think this is a better thing. I think what Beta was trying to say to us is it needs attention, and they need more backup on it to verify it.
Right.
So, the, it was never the intention of this board to pave that other parking area, because obviously, it's a self-storage facility, you don't need a big parking lot in front, people go to the.
No, but the parking lot was approved.
But there was a reserve area there on the, on the left here.
But, yeah, it's not being built.
No, we understand, we never wanted it to be built if it was not needed, so it was always intended to be grassed until such point, or unless it was needed. So, I mean, the board doesn't want to.
We, we intend to landscape it to, for. We, we intend to landscape it to, for permanency.
That's, that's fine.
Alright.
I don't think that's in, goes against what the board is-
No, I don't think so either. Alright, and then I would like to jump on five of 12. It has, he has a grid there, which is good, it shows the original plan, the revised plan in the notes.
Excuse me for one second.
Sure.
The, on four of 12. Tabitha, is action needed under review of modification at built plan, as-built plan? The spot grades?
To clarify why the pavement grades have been revised. I'd just like to hear their discussion on that.
So-
Why did we raise the, we wanted a bigger pitch from one end of the property to the other.
But the rim elevations remain the same?
Yes. Now, you're talking about literally one-tenth of an inch.
And one-tenth of an inch makes a difference in drainage?
Yes, on a big, big parking lot. And we wanted to have this thing pitching all the way to the back and into the drainage. We have, at this point, the rough was done a year ago, December. So we've, we watched that all last winter, how that drained. And then we did the finish coat last June and July, July, and we've been watching that, too. And we did have to change some of the pitch to get the pitch going into the, into the drainage systems and away from the buildings.
I just want to draw the attention-
When I walked in there, the buildings were already there, the foundations were already there, but I had to change the elevations on this to fit-
We've gone through this a lot, I totally understand that.
And if you went over there today-
We're in the final stages of this, so let's just-
I think it's a small difference in what was originally proposed, but it actually works much better today versus what was, what I saw out there.
So let Tabitha speak, because she has some concerns about this, so.
Regardless of how it works, and I'm sure it does look very nice. In reviewing Beta's comments and proposing and writing my comments to the board, which you'll find in that pocket as well, the landscape plan does not have drainage calculations on it that would prove that any of the stormwater systems would work. It also doesn't have an erosion and sedimentation control plan and it's missing a lot of the more foundation establishment plantings that would buffer and screen the property. So Beta's comments in the next few pages relate a lot to that and I just wanted to draw your attention to it.
Any other questions on the revised pavement surfaces before I move? Alright, then I'm going to go right to that review landscape plan on five of 12. The berm, we'll start with the berm, I think. We have a minimal berm separating the road from the proposed parking lot. When I say minimal, at some points it's two feet, other parts it's, it's like a foot and a half. It is much lower than the four feet, I believe, that was originally proposed. Going down, I have said this from the day one, I prefer the smaller berm. It's way more manageable, it's more in keeping with the residential construction of the property. If you go down the street, looking at the furniture property there, they have no berm. You go to the next building, they have a higher berm. And then we go to the property next to us, there is a berm there, but it's not being maintained. I think our solution is more in keeping with the furniture warehouse property, meaning it's a lower berm, easier to maintain, easier to look at, attracts less of a nuisance personally. So that's, that's my only take on it, I guess. I think it's more subjective than technical. Side yard plantings, they talk about the swales, the seeded area on the side of the property. Along the west side of the property, he's talking, they're talking about considering installing evergreen planting on the west side of the property. That's the property, side of the property between our buildings and what is called Jim's property. I don't, personally don't think that the, that the evergreens would really take that well there. There's limited, there's limited sunlight on that side because of the size of the buildings on both sides. It's a very relatively small area in between these two buildings. And it would be hard to maintain and it's also in the area that we want to continually mow and it's the, it's the area that we want to put the vegetated swales in.
Quick question.
The evergreen trees, was that used for buffering in the front of the main street or the side?
No, they went all the way down the length of the property. We did add some sizable trees in the front of the property on that side. We also have a gate in there on that side that the fire department asked for us for a gate to get, it's one, two, three. There are three means to e, entrances now to the property. So we do have a fire gate in that side to get in that side if, if need be. So we really couldn't plant the trees in the gate areas. It's further down that they wanted trees planted in there.
What was, my question is, what was the reason for those trees? Was it buffering for the neighbors?
I can't tell you the reason, I wasn't here.
If I might speak on the trees, I would imagine that it would be for buffering the neighbors, but you would also run any hydrologic calculations for drainage, given vegetation like trees being present, because they capture a lot of rain coming down before it reaches the ground. So that would change the conditions on the ground if you don't have them.
There are no trees on the other property, it would be only on our 32 feet. And we've got to get them away from that building, so you're talking about a small 10-foot area at best. If they grow at any kind of length or side, we're going to be encroaching on other properties. It's, I have to defer to you, I mean, I'm not, I don't-
So what's your solution?
I don't think they're necessary, I don't, I think they're totally not necessary.
So there's two issues here. One, the issue was when this was initially proposed, was buffering for the neighbors. We've heard from the neighbors, they appear to be relatively satisfied with what things look like, that's one issue. The second issue is what Tabitha brings up, is that to, to verify that the drainage system works given new site conditions, because these are revised from what was originally-
I would like to, I would certify, or get that cleared up as far as do we have enough vegetation to handle the rainwater that we're discharging into that prop, that side? Be happy to do that.
Right, and is the runoff on the property?
No, no, it's just the runoff on the roof, it's not the prop, just, it's just that roof area. Because the rest of the property is all going into the back swale.
Okay.
There's no real water going out back there on the sides.
What's coming off the back?
Just off those buildings and there's the smallest of the two buildings. The roof pit is not that big, the roof is not that big. But I can understand what she's saying and you want clarification that we can handle the water on our site.
If you have a swale there, you also want to make sure the swale can handle it, doesn't erode, it's-
Yes.
Properly sized.
Yes.
Properly sized, et cetera.
Yes. I don't, the other thing is in the Beta report, maybe we can ask them again. They did have our landscape, they didn't say that it wasn't sized correctly, they just said it wasn't installed yet. So I, maybe we can re-clarify that question to them, that would be one question I would have with them.
Where, where is the comment?
It was number one on their, on their list. It says, "The field observation can, that the proposed swales have not been construction in accordance with a revised landscaping plan. A small swale, which is there today, was observed in building E and terminates in advance of the stormwater management plan." We don't intend to have this connected, we contact, we intend to manage that water right there. No swale was observed. Designer should demonstrate through basic hyologic calculations that drip edge infiltration trenches partially installed, swale is capable of migrating the roof runoff.
Right, and that I think-
I'm saying to you that what's there now does not calculate, but what we propose does. So they're not saying that it, that our landscape plan doesn't work.
We're not, we're asking that you demonstrate that it does.
Right. And I would-
We're all in agreement on that.
Right, yes, and that's fine with me.
Okay.
I would like to do it without large trees.
Are you planning on mowing that?
Yes.
Are you going to irrigate it?
No. You can, you can do that, it'd be one of those items that would be mowed probably six or eight times, that's it. It's not going to be mowed, the front will be mowed every week.
That's the spot, the stuff that's irrigated is going to get mowed every week?
The stuff on the sides needs to be mowed. If you start putting tree, the original plan called for bark mulch and trees, which is not conducive to management whatsoever. Not to mention, at this point now, bark mulch is not allowed as a surface anyway. So the original plan was not conducive today, so this is, if you look at the property, we have our, both our neighbors on one side, we have basically the town of Norton on one side, there's a road layout there. So there's nothing ever going to be built on that side. And on the other side, we were in between that and Gold's Gym. So it's never going to be Central Park, you know? But we'd like to manage it and we would like to, the water issue is one thing, but the look of it, I guess, is maybe different. We'd like to manage it with not doing evergreen trees, I guess. That's my, that's what I'm asking.
What's the board feel, what's the board's feeling on that?
I don't have a problem with that, as long as they can show us that it's going to work.
Right.
Right.
You did hear from the neighbors, the large trees that are in there in the front now, they seem to be happy with it. I'd be honest with you, if they were not happy, I don't think they would have said something.
I don't, I don't see the need to plant trees between those two buildings if they're not going to grow.
Right, I don't see how-
But just, I think that-
I think we're all in agreement, that we just want it, we want documentation that the swale will work hydrologically.
Given the current layout and of everything that's there.
Yes.
Alright.
Building A, as you go to the back of the property on the west side, at the back of that, that's a significant drop, it's four or five feet-
Yes.
Down to the Gold's Gym building?
Yes, yes.
And there won't be any erosion? You'll be able to control possible erosion?
Oh, yes, I mean, that's, is our intent, is to have it not eroding. And I think by putting in grasses is actually better than the trees, as far as erosion goes, because grasses will hold it tighter. It has literally been there over a year now. I'm not saying we had huge storms, but we've had storms. And there is no, never had an issue with either, we're not piling any snow up toward that, on that side, because we are higher. You know, so when the snow melts, we're portioned on the right-hand side anyway, away from that playground. And I, there hasn't been any erosion today. I think once we'd finished those swales, I think it would be even better. And the fact that we can mow it, I think it would, just like any other lawn, will hold better than if it wasn't mowed or if it was just left to wood chips, which was originally proposed. So-
And all these are going to be the low-means turf mix, is that the?
Yes, oh yes, and, and drought resistant.
Yeah, and honestly, those mixes right there, you mow them twice a year and that's all you've got to do.
Yeah.
And it looks better that way, too.
And it works better. So, and obviously, we don't want to be a bad neighbor to the, to the playground, so.
Okay, so I think, I think what I'm hearing from the board is thoughtful of that concept, as long as we prove that it works.
Yes. Alright, the next, it says, "Major plant groups. Predominantly delicious, considered adding additional evergreen planting on the east side of the front of the ornamental fence." That's a subjective thing, they did take a picture of it, you do have a picture. We do have some plantings, they are flowering plantings that obviously are not year-round. There are, it's on eight of 12, the top picture. We do have about, I think, six or eight plants in there that will bush out a lot further than what you see there right now.
So is that picture from the outside?
Yeah, that's on from the, with your back to the road on the outside of the fence. Basically stand at the edge of the parking lot, looking what the neighbors would look at.
So, the original, I think I'm, I think I'm the only one who was here for the original hearing, but all those evergreens came up because of just the basic concern of the abutters, or what the place would look like. And, you know, and I think, I mean, at that point, it was, the site had been stripped. And so even before they started building, it was, it was a formal gravel pit in that area, so it wasn't really fully vegetated to begin with. So I think all, most of that landscaping came out of those two concerns. What the abutters saw, looking from across the street, looking on the site, and the second issue was the wind-blown sand material that was coming off the site constantly.
We can put in evergreens, I mean, it's not a cost issue, the plants that are in there now will bush out and flower. I think would be, at least six months out of the year, will be much better looking than the evergreens. But the evergreens do eventually get bigger and, and less bushy and don't necessarily, unless we go arborvitae's or something like that. We do have irrigation on that side, so we can add stuff. All I've got to do is defer to you, I don't really have a big-
We have too many deer around for arborvitae, might chew it all up.
I dare say we'll probably, in the next five years, be adding some landscaping or taking some landscape, you know, moving it around anyway. It's just like anybody's house, you know?
So what are the, what's the board's feeling on? As I said, it was being, the original plan was being driven by the neighbors' concerns about what it looked like.
Yeah, and they seemed fine.
And the, and the blowing, you know, sand from the site, basically.
And if it doesn't, you know, this stuff doesn't come up and the neighbors across the street voice a concern, I mean, with $25 at Home Depot, we'll fix it. You know? So anyway, alright.
I'm not hearing any major concerns with the proposed landscaping.
I'm fine with it, it's, it's shown.
The same as, the number, the last one there, I think where it appears to be less than shown on the plan, does not, they did not count them. Obviously, we have some perennials on the ground. We can do a, a list of them that we actually do have. I would like to say that we have a proposed plan with a proposed schedule on it. And I would like to make sure that the landscaper actually does plant all those. I mean, that's what we're paid for, so.
So this is the point, right?
Yeah, I don't want to deviate, or do I want to say that they're not here or not here? I think that's something that we could maybe- And we're paying for those plants, so I want to know they're there, too.
Almost all of them.
I didn't go out and count them, I'm sorry, I didn't count them.
Right. Okay, so what I'm hearing is the board is generally okay with the landscape plan? The issues really may relate more to the making sure things work from a drainage perspective? And then certainly in terms of plant quantities, I mean, I think you would require that it be built to this plan now, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'll go down that.
Any other issues that are outstanding? So, let's see if architect.
Right.
Page six of 12, yeah.
So we, our zoning bylaw requires landscape plan to be prepared by a registered landscape architect.
I was told that there was an exemption-
There's a waiver the first go around.
We have a certified land surveyor stamping the plans-
Yep.
On a landscape. And that was adequate.
We may have waived this the first go-around, too. So we don't think they had a landscape-
It was not a landscape architect.
We tip, we waive it almost all the time, because-
There aren't that many landscape architects out there.
One right here, but.
I'm not registered.
You're not registered?
You took her away from the private sector.
Okay, so I don't think that, I, it's probably, if it was waived the first go-around, we don't need to waive the second go-around.
I guess while we're on six of 12, the maintenance and landscape buffer, obviously, we want to maintain the property. It's a little different than maybe some of the other projects, we are not a landlord. We are an owner-operator of the property. Obviously, we want to maintain the property, period. I think some of-
So you don't want the two-year guarantee?
I, I think, well, you-
I mean, if, honestly, if you're going to, if you're an owner-operator and you're going to be there-
Yeah.
I don't think a two-year guarantee is a big deal, I think you should just say, I'll do the two-year guarantee.
Right, as long as there's not a- Right, as there's not, as long as there's any caveat to it, you know? You know, $3 million bond or something.
You should do ask for a landscape guarantee.
Let me understand, these pictures that Beta took.
Yeah.
And what, what percentage do you feel you have complied with this landscape plan? I'm a little in the dark here.
You mean, oh, as far as that one?
In other words, is this, is what the picture shows, 50% of the landscape plan, 10%, 100%?
Let's just go, we'll go through the pictures.
Well, I'm more concerned with the front, I'm not-
That's what I'm going, I'm going to say, let's start with, we can start with seven of 12. There is a tree that was uprooted, that's on our plan, that was sitting right where the sign was. And when they put the sign in, they uprooted the plant, the tree. We are going to move that tree to another location in the front of the building.
Okay, but where are the, the shrubs around the sign that this landscape plan?
Well, you have a tree right here, you have trees right here.
Alright, but where are the shrubs around the sign?
You mean, right in front of the sign? Some of this, I would say that there is less than, than 80% or somewhere, and I, I'm just guessing where we're at.
You're saying, you haven't planted your entire landscape?
No, no, we're not.
That's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand-
I want to know how much has been planted. I don't know how much has been planted.
How reflective of this landscape plan are these pictures? Because to be candid, um, not that I.
Well, it's hard to, these, mine are in color, so maybe if you want, I could show you mine a little better.
But before, you said 80% of the landscaping.
Yeah, but I mean, that was my, off the top of my head, I mean, I think, it's, biggest problem was the swales on the sides, that's what I was really getting at.
They are in winter, they're black and white.
Oh, I understand, but.
Can I show you, can I just show you, um, the colored ones, maybe?
Sure, if that helps.
If it helps you.
I would also think we would need to require that it be built to this plan.
Yeah, right, and I'm asking it to be built to that.
It's not done, they have to add more to complete it.
Again, just as, as a, a, a layman, it looked like, it looked very sparse out there, when, when last I went by. Now, I understand it's winter, but that was part of the reason for, um, evergreens. So that, you know, from.
A lot of the plants that you look on our plan are more perennial nature, more flowering nature than the evergreens.
But I.
It's just something that we decided to do, I can't put.
But, you know, with, with all due respect, Mr. Larson, I understand it came in late, but if there is one phrase that kinda permeates this discussion for the last eleven years, is, that's what we decided to do.
Right.
What should've been decided to have been done was compliance with the original site plan and order conditions. And, and again, there was supposed to be a berm, it's no berm, and, you know, this, this, this argument that while it's maintenance, well, you know, my, my grass grows, and if I don't mow it, that's maintenance. You know, if there's a burn there that has trash on it, you pick it up.
I would, if we're gonna talk about adding or subtracting plants, I'd like to go to the original, the plan that we submitted, and if you want us to modify that plan, I would be happy to do that a little, you know, as you were asking, whatever you were asking.
Yeah, I.
What's out there today is certainly not a finished product.
Right.
Where it's at is 75, 80, I don't, you know, it's subjective. I'd like to, the plan of record is the one that you have, that we submitted, yes? If you wanna modify that one, I'd be happy to talk to you about modifying that one specifically, and then I would add what you, you're asking me to do, I guess.
I don't think we're necessarily asking to modify it, but we need to make sure that all of this, you know, is there. And the pictures wouldn't seem to indicate that it's all there, and you've acknowledged that, so.
This isn't the plan of record.
It will be.
This is your plan that you submitted to us, that you were actually supposed to show us a detail of, that you never did. So let me, let me finish, the plan of record is the original plan that, before you walked in the door, somebody signed off on it, that's the plan of record.
Correct.
So let's, let's make sure we're.
Yes, I agree with that. I'm asking to modify that plan of record with this particular plan. If you wanna, I'm willing to tweak this plan if you, if you would like to. If you wanna go back to the original plan, I can sit here and argue, but if you wanna go back to the original plan, it is an approved plan. I, I'm not, I just know, I'm not arguing about it, I'm just saying that if I brought that, if I was involved in it from day one, I would not have submitted that landscape plan. For a number of reasons that I've reiterated. I'm submitting this plan, if you would like me, if you think I should beef it up a little bit, that's why we're here, um, to beef it up.
If I could just interject for a moment, the discussion of, of including the drainage calculations and making sure the drainage works should occur first before any plants are moved, added, because it will alter the drainage conditions on the site. So if we're putting more plants in or taking plants away.
We're talking, I think we're talking about the plants on the front of the property, the drainage is, what we're, the drainage of the beta and the drainage that we're asking for the vegetated swales are on the east and west side of the buildings, that, which we're saying, there is no landscape, we don't wanna put in trees on those sides, and that's what we talked about earlier. On the, what he's talking about, and I think what some of the board members are talking about, are the front of the building, what we see from the road. That, there is drainage on that property in the front, we're not, there's nothing shedded off. There's no building shedding, we're maintaining the water in the front of the building.
And then the rain garden, that would need.
The rain garden is, we would calculate that according to what Beta says here, yes. It's not a requirement for this plan, we put it in there, thought, thought, thinking that it was probably a good idea. It is not a requirement. We don't have any parking there, we don't have any, there's no shed off the water off the building on that side, that building is totally contained on the back swale of the property. So there's no water being, that, that is happening on the front of the building, where, they're talking, we're talking about adding plants by the sign, is not what we're talking about, as far as the drainage calculations go. That's my understanding.
On the right away.
I'm willing to, to tweak the landscape plan, I mean, I'd be more than happy to do it.
Alright, I know, Mr. Dre, you had a question, comment?
He prematurely answered it, so.
So I saw it's like two hands go up on it.
No, I didn't, I didn't raise my hand, no.
Well, did we ever see the original plan from 11 years ago? Let alone a year ago, when we were talking about the berm, I'm also, I don't know if we're all brought up to what the original, original.
What the original plan was? Basically, it had a wall of evergreens.
Does the entire front, the entire east side was all evergreens originally? Going to this.
This is the original.
There was a four-foot berm that was supposed to block the entire project, basically. Really be able to really see into it, I think that was the intent.
Okay.
That's what I picked off of it, I don't, wasn't here, I don't know. But if you drive down that road and see these high berms, they're not, they're not working, that's what my, that's my opinion, alright? The lower berms are very manageable and seem to work. If you look right on that particular road, there are three sets of different berms, on three different properties. So we have, like, the whole history of berms right there.
Oh, yeah.
And we have the furniture store, furniture warehouse, which is totally flat, and verily clean. And then you get to the next ones, they got picnic tables out there, and it's kinda high up, and I don't know, and then you get to the next one, and it's a real, I think, a disaster, personally. You get to ours, we, we have just as many residential as everybody else does, we're trying to really make it more of a residential property, because we can do that.
You gave us an education a year ago, we didn't know what it was until you walked in the door. But right here, you mentioned the original plan, 40 evergreen trees was the original.
Right, and lot, 30 of them were down these sides.
So 10 was gonna be up front.
I believe so, I'd have to look at it, I just.
It basically created a wall of evergreen in front of the site.
Right, yeah.
That was the original landscape, so.
And evergreens are not the best landscape, and, over a 10-year period, that's the other thing you have to start looking at when you look at some of these properties, is that we're looking at them like a, like a baby, I guess, and eventually, they're gonna get bigger. And, uh, a good example, I guess, is the red mill, I mean, those, those trees are all into these buildings. And you gotta be careful about how you plant these buildings, these trees, because they will grow. Uh, and the evergreens don't necessarily grow all that nicely.
Right.
They do last all winter, but they're not the most prettiest thing all the time. We can get them for two years, but can you get them further than that? I don't, you know, it's not a conducive soil out there anyway, you run a highway. I don't know, I just, I looked at that, and I just didn't, as a management, as a long-term owner and a manager of the property, I didn't see that as a conducive landscape plan. I'm more looking, it's like, it's like when you make a parking lot with curb cuts, you wanna be able to put the snow somewhere. So if you plowed snow, you know how to, how to construct a parking lot. That's the, if you, you know, take care of properties, you wanna know how to take care of them, and that you can take care of them. In our experience, we've taken berms down.
So this landscape plan dated 4/5/16?
Yes.
This is your proposed?
Yes.
That hasn't been approved by anybody yet?
Correct.
Correct? The only thing that approved was the original one.
Correct. And I, that's what I proposed, if you would like to, just like, what, probably what happened on this one, if you wanna slightly modify it, I'm amenable to it.
You know, I mean, uh, I'm, I'm not a landscape architect, I don't know what each of these shrubs are, each of these, um, perennials are, and what they're gonna look like, you know, it looks like a nice lush, um.
It will flower, perennials grow.
Beds on the, on the drawing, you know, the pictures certainly don't reflect that.
Half of them are.
I don't have any objections to this, I mean, again, not knowing exactly what it's gonna look like with a, a rendering or a front view rendering of what that is.
We asked for a front view rendering.
For the sign.
First time you came.
Yeah, I think it was, we were gonna do it for the sign, at, at, at least that was my intention.
The front of the building and see the whole landscaping, that was, that was one of the things we talked about.
Do it, Tabitha's background, I think you could offer an opinion on, on this.
My opinion is that, um, as the Beta group has said in their letter, we, we are seeing a plan that has many more deciduous trees, that lose their leaves during the winter, and deciduous shrubs, instead of evergreen trees and shrubs, and you're putting in more perennials, which you won't see at all in the winter, because they're underground. Um, and annuals, which you won't see at all until the summer, usually. So, the original landscape plan has nice groupings of some evergreen trees in the front corners. I especially think that in the west corner that's shown on the original plan, there are, there's a grouping of Norway spruces that could help with mitigating any runoff from the rain garden that's proposed towards East Main Street. I don't think it would be a, a bad practice, it's actually common practice, to mix your planting so that you have seasonal interest year-round.
To move this forward, can we, if, if we use Tabitha's suggestion, if you wanna add some plantings on that, we could, we would, you could add that planting, what you're talking about?
So you're looking to approve a plan in essence, subject to further modifications, working with.
Yeah, I'm happy with that. I don't think that's unreasonable.
As opposed to having a landscaper, having the, the, them show the trees on the, this revising this plan to show the landscaping, this.
Well, Tabitha, under your recommendation, there'd be more trees up front, correct?
There'd be a mix of trees.
A mix of trees.
A mix, yeah, a mix of trees and shrubs.
Okay.
Because I understand you wanna keep sightlines. So we could do something that.
At the corners of the property.
Yeah, the corners of the property.
Alright, so we need to like, you know, move this someplace.
And that's great, if, if you wanna make modifications, it's fine, let's see a plan. Before, and, and how are we gonna account to make sure everything's planned?
Well, I think the.
We could require an ASBIL.
Yeah, so we could request, we could require an ASBIL, so, yeah. But I think, so, so what I'm hearing is the board is asking for a revised landscape plan to show additional evergreen trees. And then, then is looking for, um, the calculations to show that the swale on the side of the building works as proposed, as well as the rain garden.
And they need to be constructed as proposed.
And, right, that's what I'm saying, and then the other issue was then the lighting. Document the lighting.
And the handicap ramp, acceptance by the building inspector?
That would be.
That would be the building inspector.
Right.
Whoever.
Yeah, I mean, they can't.
And I totally understand that he can't get.
The question is, what, what needs to be done prior to approval of the modification? That, so, I'm hearing the plans need to be shown.
Yeah.
My understanding with the handicap ramp would be subject to the building inspector's approval, because otherwise, they can't get an occupancy permit.
Okay, I guess I don't know why you would wait till, when you go in front of Rocky, would you wanna, just figure it out now, so you can address it?
They're, they're saying that it meets it, so, from their perspective.
We haven't heard otherwise.
Great.
Okay, so, are there any other issues outstanding on this thing? Because I think we're gonna have to continue this, because we don't still have the information in front of us.
Well, you do.
I know, the applicant's asking approval, subject contingent to those other items being provided, I'm not sure the board's comfortable. Correct?
Not me.
Yes, but we have another, we have to schedule another meeting then, in which case, we have next week's meeting time, other than that. Board member's not around, school vacation, this Tuesday after, that's the, the election.
I mean, just out of our, you know, we did do, submitted this landscape plan in April of last year. I'm not saying, but it, it's not like we submitted it yesterday. I'm willing to do what she's asked, what she's proposing that we do. I would like to handle it administratively, because of the time restraints. I can understand, um, I could probably get a, a new landscape plan by next Tuesday. But some of the things, I think, um, calculations, I'm not positive, but I, I would try to, but, I'm just saying, and, if you give me a list of plants that you suggest, I would incorporate that with the landscaper, I definitely can get the landscape plan for Tuesday, let's say, or for, by Friday.
But potentially not with the drainage cut.
Yeah, that's, might be a little different, that's a different animal. I would like to, if, because we're up against time restraints, it's nothing that you're, what you're asking about is not, not unreasonable. But we're up against a wall on time here, because of the elections. And, and there's all kinds of things that gone on here, you know, with health changeovers and whatnot, and staff changes and everything. We're, we'd like to, if we could administratively approve this project, with the modifications that I asked at before last week. And then, administratively, we're willing to pay the outside consultant, Beta, to come back and to verify to your principal planner uh, that we had built it accordingly, and then what you're asking for, and to satisfy, we're willing to satisfy Beta, and we're willing to satisfy the town of Norton. Some of this stuff is a little technical, as far as the calculations go.
You had a contractor plant these shrubs, or?
Yes.
You folks do it?
Yeah.
Did he give you a price to do, when he planted, she planted?
We're not, we're not finished paying them, we do have a contract based on that plan.
You, you do have a contract, because what I'd like to see is a contract.
Well, it's the same gentleman that did it, so, we have a, we have a price based on that plan that you're seeing in front of us.
You're talking about a, a guarantee?
Right, performance bond.
Well. I'm the one paying the bill, that, that paid for that plan, and, and paid for those.
Well, all due respect, what I see out there is a far cry from what this.
Maybe, there's a lot of, like she says, there's a lot of perennials in that property.
Well, there's a lot of evergreens as well, and I don't see them. My point is simply that I, we're under a time constraint, not of your making, but it is what it is. Before I vote on anything, I wanna see what this is gonna cost, I wanna see some type, you know, this.
What it costs.
I don't go back, let me just finish, I don't go back as far as Joanne on this thing, but, um.
I don't understand what cost has to do with it.
Because I wanna ensure that it's done, because what I see out there, if someone charged me more than 500 bucks for what's out there, I put a stop payment on the check, it's, it's frankly disgusting.
Right.
If I had a business, and I've had business in the past, if I had a business that looked like that, whether it's January or, or May, it looks awful. And it looks awful despite the fact that we had a, an approved, um, uh, landscape plan that was totally ignored. We had elevations that were totally ignored, so what you're asking, at least me as a member, and, and others can speak for themselves, you're asking us to expedite an approval on this because of, of the circumstances, we won't, you know, we don't argue whose fault that is, after 11 years. Before I vote to approve something, I want assurances that two years from now, that property doesn't look like this. So the only way I'll approve it, I'll vote for it, is a, a, a good faith estimate of what this is gonna cost. If there are additional improvements, which I, I can't believe, you know, the town of Norton, through the planner, is going to augment a, a private sector, a, a landscape plan, but it is what it is, uh, I wanna see tho, the cost of those things, uh, added to it. And if that's $10,000, I wanna see, pick the number, held in escrow.
I, I think the intent was that the applicant would provide a revised plan based on direction. on direction from.
Right.
Suggestions from Tabitha, not that she would do that.
Not that she's gonna do it, but, yeah. It shouldn't come to that, but, you know, we are where we are, and let's, let's try to wrap this up.
The point being is that we have required performance surety for landscaping in the past to make sure that things have been built. And.
When it's, like, on a subdivision with the sides of the roads and stuff?
We've required it for commercial properties.
Right.
So.
I'm reluctant, I guess, I guess. I don't know if it's, I mean, I'm just, you know, you asked me to be honest, and I'll be honest. Is the purview of the board what we pay or not pay our contractors, whether we pay them exorbitantly, or cheaply, or whatever. I don't know if that's the purview of the board. I think the purview of the board is to, to approve the project that is approved.
The point, the point Mr. Fernandez is making is that if there is a bond, it has to be valued place against the work. He's asking what's the value of the work, if it needs to be.
I can give you an estimate of what is, what, what is left on the bid, I guess. I mean, I don't know if that's a, a good number to go off of, to be honest with you, because I think, I think, to be honest with you, I think we've overpaid already.
I agree, and that's, that's exactly my point.
That's my, that's my business, and my mistake.
It's, it's your business.
If we're, you know, let's say we had a $50,000 bid, and I'm at 40 grand already that I expended money out, and I think we're, and I'm sitting there with a landscaper, and I'm saying we're either 75 or 80, I mean, you know, it's up to me to beat the guy up to get up to 100 percent, and to get to that plan. That's where I want to go. All right? Now, whether it's 10 grand, or 8 grand, or 15 grand, I don't know if it's, it's gonna help you guys at all.
Well, the point, the point being is that you, you're not supposed to get your occupancy permit until this, this plan is completed.
Right.
Plan is not completed, you're sitting there.
With an empty building.
And we have no, so we're stuck with an unfinished project again, so.
Yeah.
The point is to move forward.
And the reality is, that's your plan that you've put in front of us. The plan is over there.
I understand. I'm asking, that's why I'm here, to modify it. I could build it as-built and never.
And so it's real easy. You show us what you, and we don't care how much you paid to get that landscape.
Well, I.
You show, you show us what the amount was, and then there's surety against the amountless. That's all, that's all you're asking for, right?
But you would have to, some of it's been expended already.
That's fine.
But it's the value of what, of the work to be completed, is what we're asking for.
Right. And then it's gonna be some additional work, too.
Correct.
This, this revised plan, per the Beta Report, shows 437 plant quantities. What's on these pictures is not 437.
They didn't count, so we.
I know, nobody counted, so we don't know what we have.
Right.
I don't know if we have 50, 100, 200. But if we approve this plan, that's what we expect to be.
And there's a number on that plan.
Right. Right. All those, you know, add all those up, I assume that's gonna match this number without adding them all up.
And that's what we want to go by. And if you want, if, and if Tabitha, which with the help of Tabitha wants to add a few more plants to the property, we're willing to do that, I guess, is what I'm saying. I mean, that's what I'm saying.
I hear you.
We're willing to add to the planning. I'm asking you, do you need more plants? I don't really want to get into what the guy did or didn't do. That's, that's kind of like our stuff. I mean, that's what we do. You know what I mean?
Okay.
If I got taken, I got taken. If I, if I need to bring another landscaper, I'll bring another landscaper in. But that's, you know, my.
No, we're only asking for the, what the value of any of the work.
Yeah, mostly on, when I get involved in surety, the, the town engineer's giving me a number, and we're going back and forth on that number. I mean, when I do subdivisions, and you say that, you know, you see the side of the roads, you want X amount of time, and they give us a number.
Standard, standard, capital cost.
And I, and I come up, and I sit here and say, alright, 75 grand, I've tried. But what he's asking, I think, is a little different, is he's saying, how much did we pay?
No, I.
No, no.
I'm, I'm not gonna price this out for you.
Right.
All I know is that, if that's 80 percent, I don't think that's 8 percent of what this plan shows. It's a mess. And you're asking me, I'm much, I'm just one of seven, or now six, to go ahead and approve this modification, when, when right in front of me, you know we're near where you're supposed to be, and where you're supposed to be is the plan of 11 years ago, and I don't even want to go there. I want to go here. This is what you proposed, and you know we're near this.
But that's what I proposed. But I did propose that.
We're going around the circle of this argument.
So, I, I'm just telling you, just, you, you said, you know, you want to be honest? I'm telling you personally, I will not vote to approve this today or next week unless I have assurances, that's dollars and cents, this, this 11-year episode has left a pretty bad taste in my mouth.
All right.
Unless I have assurances, there's money someplace, that if you don't do it, we call up Joe, the, the landscaper, and say, get onto that property and put this in. Because so far, after 11 years, you know, three high school kids on a weekend could do a better job than that.
Do you want to settle on a dollar amount tonight?
No, I don't, I don't have anything to base it on.
I think we need to continue this. I think you need to come back with a revised landscape plan, and I think you, we need, working with Tabitha, come up with some sense of surety to complete the plan.
Is that fair?
It is, yeah. Has we required surety?
No, 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 Matt. Is everybody, is that all right?
I think that's what we're hearing, correct?
That's what gets my vote.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right, so that's, that's the issue with the list.
So, I'll work with Tabitha.
Right.
On revising the plan.
Correct.
On what she just recommended.
Right.
And we'll talk to her about a dollar amount.
Right, the planner in the past has come up with a, a example, a sample of.
And then.
Value of work to be completed.
Right.
All right, that being said.
And then, and then how about the swales?
But then we have, then, we, we have the second issue of documenting through calculations that the swales will serve the purpose of, they're intended to, which is take the drainage off the roof back to the, to the basin. And that also relates.
We're gonna contain the, the runoff off the roof on that site, not connected to the, it was never intended to, on those landscape plans. We're gonna contain it on that site, right there, in the swale, and it's not meant to run down the grass to the pond, right? We, we aren't clear on that.
All right. We need to, you need to demonstrate that it's gonna meet that intended purpose, basically.
Right. I'll get the gallon amount, huh?
Usually we like to see details as well, but.
Well, you do have, there was an environmental letter that we did submit. Did you see that?
Cross-section of the swell?
Yes, yes, there is in here. We've submitted that, too.
There's a lot of file with this project.
Joanne?
Yes.
If it only takes a few moments, could I actually have somebody in the audience speak on this?
Sure.
Wonderful.
This is been. Yes. Well, otherwise, the sound doesn't go onto the tape, so, no.
After watching this. Okay, I just want to clarify a couple of things, not only to the people that don't know. I do live directly across the street, and I also signed those original plans, because I was on the planning board 11 years ago when this started. And the reason for the 30 evergreens down the side was to block Gold's Gym. The owner of Gold's Gym also worked on and started and put the plans in for the storage unit. And it's such a mess at Gold's Gym on that side. It was never finished. I mean, it's, they come off the pavement, and the fire lane is used for parking, and it's all dirt. And it's just, it's an eyesore. And the reason for it, to put the 30 evergreens up, was to block the eyesore from the back of Gold's Gym, or the side, the east, eastern side of it. And that was the reason for the evergreens, not for any other reason. And as far as the berm goes, the berm in front of Gold's Gym is there, and it's a four-foot berm, yeah. But it's there because they're open till 10 or 11 o'clock at night, and they're open at 5:00 in the morning. And people, and believe me, at 6:00 in the morning, their parking lot is full. The headlights, not involving my house, but the headlights go right into the two houses across from Gold's Gym. With the berm that high, and it has become overgrown now, it totally blocks out the headlights of the homes across from it. So, that's what the big, the big deal is. They have a lot more, it's not taken care of. You're right in that respect. It's not taken care of. But as far as across from my house, the parking lot that was on the, in, in front of, I think it's Building C, was also gonna be a parking lot, which would have had headlights coming and going, and people pulling in and out of there. So, yeah, maybe a four-foot berm would have been necessary. It's not a parking lot anymore. He has landscaped it, he has grassed it in, and even on the other side in front of the office, the hours aren't gonna be nearly as long as what we see with Gold's Gym. And the, the cars, the few cars that are there are parking towards, headed towards the building, not towards the houses across the street. So, I just felt that, you know, if you had a better understanding of where it's coming from, and what it was 11 years ago, that, that's basically what it was. And.
That's helpful to have the history.
Well, you know, Joanne, you were there, but I'm sure you don't remember. You've had so many different things. But I just thought, for the people that weren't involved in it then, and don't live there and don't know, that's what's behind the landscaping. Okay?
All right, thank you. That's very helpful.
You're welcome.
All right, so we need to continue this. So, we have our meeting scheduled for next week. I'm assuming everybody's available. We had it penciled in, so we need to continue this hearing.
To 4:11?
To 4:11 at, what's we have?
7:25?
7:25?
That's.
That's fine.
Okay.
Right, we have a motion.
Second.
I'll take it then. Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Mr. Jersey?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
I will also vote yes.
Then that will be here.
That will be here. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Next. A little bit after 7:30. We have the continuation of the public hearing for East Hodges Street, shared drive.
Correct. This is under tab two in your binders. You'll find the same thing, the report from me, and four attachments. I also have the large copy, large set of plans here, and the stormwater report.
The occupant here?
Shane Oats.
Anybody here for?
He was here.
Near East Hodges Street? Are they out in the hall, maybe? I, I'm sorry, didn't hear you? You're for?
Woodlock Park.
Woodlock Park, okay. We do have a scheduled hearing. Unfortunately, we need to hear those first, because they've been, they've been noticed in the paper. We, we, yeah, we, we have to take public hearings when they come up, because they're noticed, they're advertised, and then we fit in the rest of our business afterwards. I'm sorry you've had to wait. This is the next, next one. Unless you want to come back next week? I don't know. I mean, it might, we still might continue both next week, so. But we do need to, we do need to take the public hearing, unfortunately, for you. You'll have to wait, so.
I'll say.
Yes.
Good evening, Shane Oats with Conoco Engineers and Scientists. We're back tonight as a follow-up to our meeting in early March. We revised the plans, and this is in regards to East Hodges Street. We've made some revisions with the plans, and we've addressed some comments from the peer review engineer, Armory Engineers. I'm not su, I wasn't present at the last meeting. Did you guys go through the original comment letter from Armory? Okay. So, we received a letter from Armory today that basically says, most everything was addressed. What I can do is I can just kind of summarize what they're still saying needs to be discussed with the applicant and the board. I don't know if that sounds like a good attack. So, again, most of the comments from our March 6 letter have been adequately addressed. However, the following items are not fully resolved and should be discussed in the public hearing. One, rate and volume of stormwater runoff towards East Hodges Street would be increased under proposed conditions. Applicant's engineer has correctly stated that this project is only subject to D P stormwater standards to the maximum extent practicable, because it is only for lots. However, we understand that there are capacity issues with the existing culvert under East Hodges Street, which results in occasional flooding and overtopping of the road. The information provided does not quantify the impact the increase in runoff would have on the existing flooding problems. Potential flooding solutions to mitigate the impact of this development could be replacing the existing culvert and/or providing comp storage on the property. However, additional study would be required to determine the most effective mitigation. Is that better?
Yeah.
So, that's obvious. I know that was discussed at the last hearing. We did provide and have a conference call yesterday with the peer engineer, peer review engineer in Tabitha, as well as the project lawyer. And we kind of described in detail what was going into the calculations, the hydroCAD calculations, and why those pre and post numbers weren't being reduced. The long and short of it, let me show you on the plan here, is that in order to meet the pre and post runoff, you would have to put some sort of berm or basin adjacent or within the wetland itself, which would probably be rather difficult to permit with Conservation Commission. Given the flooding concerns at the existing culvert at East Hodges, to quantify it a little bit, too, during the 100-year storm event, in pre-existing conditions, the total runoff is approximately 36 CFS cubic feet per second. As a result of our proposal, because we are trying to mitigate a lot of the stormwater concerns, it's 35 CFS, so it's about one CFS, or I have them backwards, it's 35. Post-development is 36. So, there's a slight increase of runoff. That equates to about a quarter of an inch of runoff within that wetland area, additional volume from a volume perspective. Now, the state standards require that you meet, you try to meet the runoff, not necessarily volume. There also isn't any local bylaw regarding volume. And again, as we discussed yesterday, because this is a project that's two or four lot, two to four lots, we're not subject to the standards. Given what we're proposing, we feel that it's quite an improvement over existing conditions. If this was just a one-lot development, if we just put in a driveway with one house, there wouldn't be any stormwater controls at all, and you'd have some of those same runoff issues as well. So, I guess we're kind of in a balancing act. Do we propose berms that would alter the functionality of the wetland areas? Do we dare propose to put a detention facility within a wetland area, like a constructed wetland? Knowing the Conservation Commission, I doubt that would be permitted under their, under their bylaws, so. Do you want me to continue to go through, or do we want to talk about these one at a time?
Those are the primary issues. I think we, when we discussed this yesterday on the phone, we thought.
Yeah.
Try to discuss those first. I also want to draw to your attention to the planning board report I put together. It has comments from a butters, and a photograph from a butter showing the current flooding conditions. So, just in weighing that into your opinion of the benefits and detriments of the project. And Pat Brennan is also here to answer any questions on behalf of Armory.
Okay, so, Pat, if you're here, maybe, obviously, the flooding at the culvert's a major concern. We understand the replacement cost is prohibitive for this type of development. However, adding more flow to an already problematic area is, I think, also an issue, so.
Sure.
If you want to talk about any kind of potential.
Yeah, sure. Pat Brennan with the Army Engineers. As Shane went through, you know, he read my comment for Beta. And yesterday, when we were on the conference call, and it wasn't, it was one of Shane's associates that was on the phone with us, I had posed the question of what is, what, how do you quantify what that additional volume toward that culvert does in that wetland area? You know, does it add an inch of height to that flooding condition, or what is it? At the time, they didn't have that answer, because it's more, you have to look at, what they're looking at is just the runoff from the actual property. There's actually, you know, obviously, there's a lot more runoff that's coming up watershed, down, and bottlenecking up that culvert. So, it's a little bit more involved than just looking at that particular property. However, and maybe you can answer this, Shane, I guess, when he just mentioned a quarter of an inch difference, is that just a quarter of an inch if you take the area of the wetland on the property, or is that?
Yes.
Going off property?
Yeah, there was, there's a. There was, there's a calculation you can run in HydroCAD, which is the software we use that allows you to figure out what that depth of volume is. Yeah.
Right. So, and so basically, when you look at the calculations, as the storms get more intense, when you get toward the 25 and the 100-year storm event, the impact actually decreases overly from, it's still greater than the existing condition, but the change isn't as drastic as it is during the lower frequency events, which are actually the more frequent events. So for instance, the change in the rate for a two-year storm is actually 103% greater under proposed conditions than what it is today. It's 2.3 CFS existing, which is versus 4. roughly 7 proposed. So it goes from 103% difference during the two-year event down to 2.7% difference during the 100-year storm, which during a 100-year storm, everything's being flooded for the most part. So you don't really want to rely just on that particular event. So I, you know, I went through it. I also, I found in our files that our office reviewed a project on this back in 2007, 2008, and there was discussion back at that time about potentially replacing that culvert or providing compensatory storage, which is why I had mentioned that in my comments. As Shane mentioned, some of that work would probably need to take place either in the wetlands or adjacent to it. You know, if you could do it adjacent to the wetlands and provide some type of basin there that would provide that compensatory storage, possibly increase the size of that wetlands, that wetland. You know, maybe that's something that could be, that could mitigate this effectively. But without the actual calculations showing that, we really don't know at this point. So that's why I just threw a couple of potential solutions out there to help mitigate. Knowing that there's an existing issue there now, you're going to exacerbate that a little bit. How much is it going to be exacerbated? We really, I guess a quarter of an inch is about where we're at right now, but, you know, I haven't seen calculations verifying that. So that's, I just kind of wanted to put that all out on the table so everybody's aware of, you know, where I am with the review, where they are with what they've done for their calculations and so forth. And I just wanted to bring it up for discussion so that we can, you know, talk about it and see, see how the board feels about those issues.
So a quarter of an inch, you alarm with a quarter of an inch or are you?
If that's what it happens to be, that's, it's not, that's not a huge amount.
Well, in this area, you don't consider it a huge amount of water.
Well, the difference in, what I did is I put together a table. I didn't provide it in my report, but I put together a table of what the increase in cubic feet is during each of those four storm events. So during the two-year event, it's about almost 9,000 cubic feet. It's about 67,000 gallons. During the 10-year storm, it increases by about 11,000 cubic feet, which is about 82, 83,000 gallons. During the 25-year storm, it increases about 10,000 cubic feet, which is about 75, 76,000 gallons. During the 100-year storm, it increases about 9,500 cubic feet. So the increases in cubic feet is almost the same for every storm. You know, it's rough, it's between 9,000 and 11,000. So it's not, it's all in the same ballpark. So regardless of whether you're a 100-year storm or the two-year storm, that quarter of an inch is going to be.
But we don't know how that affects the culvert.
Correct.
And that's the critical issue.
In the volume, it's the rate that you're looking at for the culvert.
Right. How much flow?
You know, if you, if he constructs, if they construct another basin on the property and slow down that rate, they can certainly mitigate what's going toward that culvert. It's, the volume is, when you have a bottleneck like that, how much more is it piling up on top of it? And that's where you get that, that increase in floodwater.
Right.
But if you can hold back that water, like he, one of the other things he mentioned is doing some type of berm in the wetland to try to, you know, put some type of control structure that meters out that water, then you can possibly get it to a point where you slow it down enough so that you're not getting that bottleneck at that culvert anymore. You're releasing it at a rate that can.
You hold it, in essence, what a dam does on a river if it floods.
Correct.
You hold it back and then let it out slowly.
Exactly. Exactly. But the culvert, I, you know, based on the notes that I had seen from back in '07, '08, you know, the culvert, it's an old stone culvert, granite culvert. There was some, I think there was a piece of granite that was blocking a portion of it back then, whether or not, I'm guessing that it's probably been removed since then. That stone was blocking it, but it's a, it was basically a three-foot by three-foot culvert. Back then, they were talking about replacing that with a six-foot wide by three-foot high concrete culvert. But again, this is just, I was just looking at notes that were between the engineer in our office that was reviewing it and the consultant that was working on it at that time for the applicant, which was a different engineer than Conoco.
All right. So given the flooding is a problem here, I think we would need to see some calculations, some assurance that you're not going to create any worse problem at that culvert with the proposal.
Well, to analyze the culvert would be quite an undertaking. If we're doing a watershed analysis, it's not something you just spend a few hours on. It's a lot of work, tremendously.
But that seems to be the critical issue. I understand that, but it's a critical issue on this whole project.
Yeah. Okay.
Let me, let me ask a six-year-old's perspective question. Obviously, the additional water's going to come from all the impervious area, not the least of which is the driveway, but, or the roadway leading in, but obviously then also rooftops, driveways directly to the houses, and there's that T driveway across the top, none of which is near or in wetlands. Why wouldn't there be some use for some type of retention basin near the houses so that it, I'm just looking at this.
Whale instead of berm.
We've already proposed that as part of our.
Okay, you haven't got.
So the thing that's tripping the calculations, because, to be honest, matching pre and post development rates is step one in any site development project we meet, and it's easy to do. You add more storage, you put stuff under pavement, you add, you make your detention ponds bigger. It's very easy to accomplish. The reason we're getting tripped up here is because it's the first 500 feet of this driveway, because we have no upland area where I could put 50 cultech chambers or put a 100 by 100 detention basin. There's just no way. It's all wet. So we come down at a shallow grade to the low spots here with some catch basins. We clean the water, we get our TSS removal rates, and then we directly discharge it because there's no way to hold it back. Up after Station 500 of the site, everything is controlled. Basically, we grade the driveways and the T section and the last 500 feet of the road go into what we're now proposing as a rain garden instead of a four-bay. That rain garden area allows us to get the 44% TSS removal rate, which was one of Patrick's original comments to be addressed. And then it goes into an infiltration basin. That is sized adequately to take that 500 feet of road, the T and the driveways. What we've also added are these cultech chambers to introduce roof runoff right back and recharge it into the ground. So the reason these calculations are just missing is because of that first 500 feet of road. We've got terrible soil conditions there. They're obviously wetlands. When you run your curve numbers, your pre and your post, it's just not going to hit it unless we can control that middle wetland area, which is, just won't be permissible under conservation. There's no way. We're already disturbing approximately, just under 10,000 square feet of BVW here, and that's kind of the threshold for additional Army Corps permitting, and it's quite an undertaking. So that's kind of where we're stuck here, is that first 500 feet, which was why when I said, if this doesn't work and we, and the applicant decides to put one house, well, we're still going to have this problem and we won't have any controls. We'll just put in a 12-foot wide driveway with no stormwater. They'll go pull a building permit.
Well, let me ask you a question. You need to pave it?
What's that?
You need to pave it?
According to the bylaw, yes. The shared driveway, and it has to be 20 feet wide, and it has to have a berm. We would love this to be a little smaller and less intrusive and create a lot less, you know, runoff, so. Impervious-type pavement probably wouldn't work in this situation because it's just pure fill, you know, to get the structural integrity of that. And the base of those are, you know, the maintenance is terrible on those. It's quite a nightmare, so. I know that Matt Costa, the projects lawyer, had mentioned, you know, the only way to really, because it's just four houses, if we were to, we'd love to be able to upgrade the culvert and pay for the drainage study to do that and then actually do that, but with the money you're making on four houses, it's just, there's nothing left.
It has to be paid.
You have to come in with a proposal with, you know, an affordable housing-type project, which the applicant doesn't want to do at all, so.
So this, can you read the?
The bylaw says that you need a minimum of four inches graded gravel placed over a properly prepared base, graded and compacted to drain from the crown. It doesn't say it needs to be paved. You could have base over a subbase of gravel.
I guess my only concern with that would be.
This is through the.
The integrity of the roadway through a wetland with all this fill, because part of this roadway is coming up four to six feet. I don't know what Patrick thinks about that, but, you know, to have something not structurally as strong as you get with a subdivision-type road in just a pure fill situation.
We have had unpaved common driveways, but I, they have not been wetland crossings, so.
Yeah. I mean, it's certainly something we could, we could look into quickly and get some, some other opinions.
Yeah. The one, one issue with the gravel roadway, Conservation would probably, I'm guessing, may not like that because that's subject to erosion a lot easier into the wetlands, especially when you're.
As I said, I do recall having unpaid common drives, but I don't believe any of them cross wetland. They're all.
Right. And one of the other, and I was just thinking about it when Shane was talking, he had mentioned, you know, maybe a porous type of pavement, but that requires, you know, it's an asphalt. It requires about 15 inches of different layers of aggregate underneath it for the storage layer.
Right.
You could probably do that in the fill. The only thing is it's going to end up in the wetlands one way or the other.
Right, right, right. It'll just run out the side.
Just not going to direct this drive. It's going to, yeah. Which would certainly slow down the rate if you log it down, so.
Right. Well, if we could take that 500 feet of road and make it anything but a 98 curve number of pavement, I mean, we'd be done. Would be very, that's how close this is. So I know it sounds terrible that you're increasing runoff rates, but we've really, we've done a lot to mitigate it. You know, if you took our stormwater controls away, it would be quite different, that's for sure, so.
And can I just follow up on that quarter inch additional runoff?
Sure.
That's with this retention basin holding back some of it?
Yeah, the retention pond, the detention pond and rain garden, you see here, treat that last 500 feet of driveway.
Right.
And the rooftops. And the T and the driveways, yep.
So again, that's taking into account the capacity of the, of the.
It's not that we couldn't, the problem is that we can't get that front 500 feet from a grade perspective. We can't get it out back. If we could, if we could just grade all the way down 900 feet back to this upland area, then we'd be done as well. I would make that basin a little bit bigger to accommodate the 500 feet.
The wetland's the low point.
Yeah.
And just to clarify with that quarter of an inch, that's, you know, you go out there after two-year rainfall, and there's two feet of water there. Right now, under proposed conditions, there's going to be two feet and a quarter inch of water. It's not, it's not a quarter, quarter inch of rainfall, additional rainfall. It's additional water in that, basically the bathtub that you're.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
What about a timber structure?
What's that?
A timber structure for the first 500 feet.
A bridge.
Yeah.
I think Conservation likes to have controlled runoff, so when you have runoff on a driveway where there could be oils, greases, sediments, they don't want that to infiltrate into anything back into the wetland, which is exactly what that would allow. You'd have the hole, you know, you'd have cracks in it and stuff like that, which is also why they probably would be opposed to impervious-type pavement, because the goal of that is to get the runoff right back into the ground. Well, you know, Conservation agent's going to see this and she's going to say, you're not putting anything right back into the ground into my wetland, you know? She wants that to be a closed system, I would imagine.
And as you mentioned, wetland soils will not take that water because they're already saturated, so you need to build a structure underneath.
Right. It would treat it, like impervious pavement would treat some of it, but you wouldn't get the what you're required to get for sediment removal and, you know, you wouldn't achieve those numbers.
The amount of wetland fill, you would have to get a variance from the state anyway. 10,000 square feet.
Where it's just under that right now.
Yeah, but isn't a 5,000 square feet is the variance limit for wetlands protection?
That requires mitigation, which we are proposing, one-to-one mitigation. So we're creating additional wetlands already because of our disturbance. Yeah.
Okay. Well, do we have a couple other issues with wells and water?
Yeah.
So the earlier plans showed water main that was incorrectly pointed out to the applicant, and they were hooking up to that. Instead of doing that, because there is no water main, they're proposing deep wells on-site, and they would be sprinklering the dwellings, which is satisfying the fire department. I spoke to him today.
Do we know if the wells have the capacity to reduce?
It's conceptual at this point.
What we've proposed and what's, what we've found has been done in other small projects is that we're actually going to have a storage tank, which will stay full all the time, so you'll have domestic use tied off of that tank, as well as fire suppression service, which will have a pump at the bottom of the tank, and during fire, that'll be triggered and it'll pump up the, it's been sized for the appropriate gallonage under the fire code. It'll have, a full fire suppression engineer will have to get involved prior to building permit, but it's, it's been done before. And that gets back to, that adds a significant cost to these four single-family dwellings, adding fire, you know, a fire suppression service into single-family residences is pretty rare. But that's one of the caveats. The fire department said, if you're making your road twice as long as you need it, we need some insurances in case something happens and we can't get down those 1,000 feet, so. That's what we're showing on the plans. What we've shown on the plans now is an approximate septic system location, well, proper setbacks, reserve areas, that whole stuff, so. And Patrick's other outstanding comment is that prior to building permits being issued, and he suggested some language, which we're fine with, about soils testing. We'll have to do soils testing for the detention basin, soils testing for the roof runoff systems. We're just trying to wait and do it all at once so that we only have to cross that wetland once before the crossing's constructed, so. Because when we even go out there to cross to get to the upland, to do this testing for septic and drainage, we'll have to submit an NOI to the Conservation just to do that crossing.
And the well explorers.
And the well, right. Yep.
So on the properties, where, the septic system, then there's going to be a tank at each house?
Yeah, the tanks will be fed off the well from the rear of the site.
Sheet eight.
Yeah, sheet eight. So on sheet eight, you can see we've shown some approximate leaching fields with reserve areas for each of the houses. Then out back, we have deep wells. You know, these are long, very skinny lots. So then we have deep wells with the appropriate setback, and then they're tied into these storage tanks that have two lines. They have a domestic and a fire suppression line coming out of them. And we have a small detail of that tank, which just shows a pump in the bottom, but that'll have to be designed. So, but we ran some initial calculations just to make sure the tank was probably the right size.
So each house is going to have a 2,500-gallon tank?
Water tank, yep. A water storage tank, yep. That's kind of what you have to do to, to get the adequate amount. It's like a 10-minute response, you know, flow based on the square footage of the house, and the sprinklers have to run for a minimum of 10 minutes, so that's what, that's the size. Almost twice the size of a septic tank.
The drainage issue is still one outstanding, driving the.
I'll just point out the last thing that Patrick addressed is that prior to issuance of billing permit, there was talk about easements, so we will record proper easements over the shared driveway, and that recording information will be submitted to the planning board as well. So those were the three outstanding issues, obviously the drainage one being the big remaining one.
All right. So what's the board's feeling on this?
I don't know.
They need to come back with additional information to see what else they can do.
Yeah, they got to mitigate the flooding somehow.
Well, I actually went up to the site today. I mean, I wouldn't call it a culvert, whatever that is, is woefully inadequate, it's probably been there for 150 years.
Right.
So I frankly don't view it as their problem. I just don't want them to add to a problem.
Correct. Correct, right, yeah. I would, I would agree with that also. So I think we, that's the issue, we need to...
Are you here for East Hodges?
Yeah. You're one of the others? I think we spoke last time. Do you want us to speak again? Okay, come on in.
Hey.
Chris.
Nice to meet you, Chris. Um, my name's Chris Boak. I've been here before. I don't know if everybody saw the video that I passed in of the road being underwater. I know the culvert is a big thing. This storm from the past weekend, was that a big storm?
Uh, this past weekend, uh, not necessarily a big storm, no. I think it was a little over an inch, so.
It went three feet, that, that went three feet underwater. I have a new video that I took from, the rain started, I think, nine, ten o'clock at night on Friday. I took it around nine o'clock in the morning. I came back, I took it again at six. It was probably three feet underwater, probably a hundred and fifty feet across. I can show you on my phone right now if you want to see it.
The road?
No, not the road, the, the, the stream.
Okay.
It goes from two inches to three feet.
Yep.
And that was a small storm. Now, he's not sure of the water that's being affected in the first five hundred feet. That's the wetlands. That's what we're here for. That's what we're talking about. So if you don't know the calculations and you're just barely coming in under the mark, kind of convenient, no offense, but you're right underneath the mark of the state regulations, but you're not sure of your numbers to begin with. It's kind of a difficult statement to make. Now, if you open that culvert, the same video that I have on the other side of the road is going deep underwater, too. There's a lot of water on that side. That side of the road, because it's getting water from both sides. Basically, picture a bowl, okay? Now, you have a bowl, which is this low area where all this water is. You add houses, you drop in an ice cubes. The more ice cubes that go in, the less water it takes to fill the hole. The other side of the culvert, if you open that up, it's already flooding, too. It's just nobody's looked to the other side of the road because nobody's building it yet. But again, I have it on tape. I'll show it to you right now. It's on my phone. I, I also have it on the flash drive.
Could I just, because I'm not sure I understand. When you say it's three feet underwater, I mean, I, I was there today and, um, I'm trying to think what time. After we had, it was probably about eleven. No, but I mean, you've got the, the, whatever accumulated from the other storm plus today, and was about a foot below the top of the opening.
I didn't look at it today. When I, the video that I have is, is, it's on, the opening is on the wall.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, yeah, it's underwater. You can't see the opening.
Okay.
Now, as for the flow, you can see in the video, the flow is significant. You're getting a large amount of water underneath that road. That's why the other side is flooding out also. And again, it's usually a, you know, two-foot stream, two inches deep. This is now, on both sides of the road, on, on my side of the road, it's worse, because, you know, you're on the other side of the dam, basically. It's probably a hundred and fifty feet wide. As far back as you can see, as far back as these wetlands go, it's underwater. On the other side of the road, it's eighty feet across, just as deep. So if you open that culvert, you're gonna blow all that water through the other side. Where's that going? Now, we're, we're, again, we're talking about just these four houses, but it's only four houses. Okay? Well, they're building four more houses on the other side of the street. If you go to Mary Jo, is that the name of it? Before Richmond, they're putting in houses there. From that area down, that's the rim of the bowl. Everything goes down to that area. Now, it's shedding from the road, and you can see on the video, there's a three-foot stream in front of my driveway, pushing the water from the road. That's just from my side of the road. There's another one on the other side of the road, going that way. Now, coming from the other side of the culvert, same thing. So you've got all this water converging on this area from, from the road. Now, it's also coming from the backlands, from the, the other side of the bowl, coming in. So it's coming in from the back, the middle. Now, on the other side, the other side of the road is flooded out, too. But nobody's looked, because nobody's building there. I mean, we're talking a lot of water. And that's what I'm worried about. Now, again, you, you change water tables and what, now, I have a shallow well. Do I have to put in an artesian? Who's paying for that? Because they're changing the water tables. It's not my responsibility. They, they have, you know, it's, it's, basically, they have one house lot. If you look at what they're paying for taxes, um, I think the first lot is thirteen, the second one's twenty-two, the next one's thirteen. There's one lot that's valued at a hundred thousand dollars. They have one house lot. They're trying to push for. It's not that they got four. They want four. So, I mean, again, I'll, I'll pass it in now at the end, however you want it. I can show it to you now, but again, it's, it's a lot of water. And this is from a small store.
So Tab, with all the videos that were on the Dropbox, those are, yeah, there was about seven or eight different...
Yeah, I'm not a video conserver by any means.
They're a little sideways, but there is a still of one of the videos in your packet.
Right. Okay.
Okay, so, so clearly, the drainage issue is the major concern with this, with this proposal. I think you need to sort of look at it a little bit more and see if there's any mitigation and, you know, to the, because what you're providing was, uh, we don't have any calculations behind what you just provided.
Yeah, I mean, we can come up with a depth calculation. I don't know that that's gonna appease the concerns by any means. Again, I think the only way to, to ultimately mitigate the issues that are going on out there is to, you know, increase a propos, the proposal, you know, selling four houses won't do it, to replace a culvert, it's just...
But that's gonna push, again, the other side of the road is underwater.
Right.
You're just pushing it away from you and...
Well, no, I mean, part of the, part of a detailed, uh, study would, I mean, that's the first thing you have to achieve. You can't flood your downstream neighbors. So, we, you could ultimately conduct a pretty big watershed analysis, which this is, and then come to the realization that you can't increase that culvert, you know? You will absolutely destroy down, downstream properties, so that's part of what, what would have to be looked at, so. Yep.
Okay.
Quick question?
Yeah.
What would a general cost of a study like that be?
What's that, of a watershed analysis study?
A study, yeah, if you were to just do...
Um, I mean, they normally take about a month's time, and depending how lenient boards have been with us, if we can use some of the existing data instead of doing survey, actual field survey, it can take a little less time, so. It can get expensive, though. I mean, ten, twenty thousand dollars off the top of my head. Patrick could probably get, answer that as well. You do an analysis of the contributory areas that come to that one point. So we would look at that culvert as our analysis point, and anything based on topography, existing topography, anything that gets to that culvert, you'd have to analyze.
Were you surprised when I said that that whole area, I mean, a hundred and fifty feet across, two hundred feet, and as far in as you can see, was three feet underwater? Were you surprised when I said that?
Yeah, no, I've heard, I've heard about the issues out there, and the applicant is sensitive to not making them worse. I mean, this isn't, no one's trying to get away with anything. They're just trying to utilize their property that they're paying taxes on, so. And this is probably one of the least intrusive ways. Again, if, if we put a single-family dwelling here, there's still gonna be a driveway here, and then you don't have any stormwater controls, you know? So we're trying to balance our proposal. Oh, I understand. Not a lot less, because what we're taking with, we're taking the houses out of the equation. It's that, like I said, it's the first five hundred feet of any type of crossing, whether it's a twenty-foot-wide paved driveway or a twelve-foot-wide gravel driveway, which is probably what it would be.
Now, when this watershed analysis is done, are you gonna take into effect the property on the other side of me who's just been resurfaced, and then are you ready to build on that?
What you normally do is you, what we would normally do is we would take historical USGS topo maps, and then we'd put current aerial images. So if someone's building a house today, no, that's not gonna show up there. But a little house in a big area doesn't make that much of a difference, given the size of the study area.
People to my left?
Yeah.
Yes, and eighty acres?
Yeah.
I don't think it's gonna be a single house.
Uh, that's encumbered by even more wetlands than this. We've looked at that. We've looked at trying to look at our neighbors to see if we could provide alternative access, because that was, that's gonna be the first thing we have to prove when we make a submission to the conservation commission, is that this is a limited-access project.
Right after you guys were done on this side, they stopped on the other side.
Right.
Just convenient, I don't know.
No, we don't have anything to do with that, so.
Okay, well, again, I think we need to continue this and further look at the drainage issue, so. Another repeat of, I'll think of the eleven.
Okay, so...
So what, so if we're continuing to next week?
Yeah, it's normally, right, that's what we have.
Right. What will we be able to accomplish in one week?
I guess I want to know, yeah, I'd like to know.
Some confirmation of the information, so that our, um, our consulting engineer can take a look at it and verify if that, what he's saying is, is a true statement, and is he comfortable with what that, what the project would result in. So right now, you don't have a clear understanding of the impacts, correct, Pat? Is that the issue?
Yeah, I don't have any calculation. I mean, I know that there's an increase.
Right, but we don't know...
From the calculations that they have, but it's a quarter inch, but I don't know.
Right, so we need to verify if that, if that is the case, and then again, and then what do you do with that?
Is that a feasible timeframe, one week from today, to do that?
Yeah, we have the calculation already done, so it's just printing out some hydrocater parts. I'm just, well, I'm not concerned, it's just reality. I mean, that's that answer, but it's not going to improve what I'm saying here, you know? I'm not all of a sudden gonna be able to come back in seven days and say, "Hey, now we're meeting our pre and post." It's just, we've kind of tried everything without sitting down with Jennifer and her letting us destroy a lot of wetlands, so.
There is runoff from the uplands now.
Yes.
The only thing you've designed for is the post-construction runoff, and because of that first five hundred feet, you can't manage it all.
Right.
What if you were to, in the area that you can work in, increase this detention basin such that you're handling some of the current existing runoff from the uplands to offset what you can't make up in the five hundred, first five hundred feet?
Right, that's a good idea in theory, but the existing break, the catchment area break, is right after the wetlands. So that upland area that you have the A-type soils as well, never comes down towards the wetlands. It goes off-site. So we, we can never really get full credit for that, which is why this detention pond, I mean, like I mentioned, if I could make that five times bigger, I have the room right here. I mean, I could bring this pond all the way here. I could make it gigantic. It's just that the water can never get there.
The water's coming in from off-site, you have to mitigate off-site.
We can only mitigate this catchment area. There's two catchment areas basically on-site, so.
If you look at sheet three, you have the two, the two branches of the stream coming together and meeting, so the runoff is coming upstream.
Yeah, there's actually, in the stormwater report, we actually, you can see one of the figures has the pre and post-subcat areas, and that'll show you where that break line actually is, based on existing topography. So you have to meet those subcat areas, you know, so.
So do you see any, the first five hundred feet?
I think the first five hundred feet will always be a problem, whether this is four houses, one house, or forty condos, as a forty B, you know?
I guess I'm looking for...
It's always gonna be a problem.
Education here, because where you're proposing to build, you've got elevations of a hundred feet. Your retention basin is, at the edge is ninety-six. So from that, you, you have to have flow from that hundred feet to at least the ninety-six.
Mm-hmm.
Right now, from that hundred-foot elevation, that's ultimately flowing into the wetlands, is it not?
Today it is, yes. What we're doing here is, like, when the driveway drains here, we've added a curb to control flows from these four driveways. Here's the curving. It comes down, down the road. Here's a hundred, ninety-eight, and then there's a curb cut at ninety-six. That's how it gets in there.
But, but you're only accounting for the impervious area that you're creating.
Right. You're only holding that back, right.
You're not handling any of the, whatever's falling there today, or tomorrow, or Thursday, whenever it's supposed to, to rain. You're not accounting for any of that. You're not handling any of that. And what's gonna fall Thursday is gonna flow into those wetlands.
Right.
No construction. And all I'm, all I'm asking, I guess, is, can that not be handled as well so that you're offsetting the beginning? What am I not understanding?
So here's the catchment areas. This is basically the back of the houses, so this goes off-site. We never get credit for that.
The other direction, okay.
This is, this is the only portion of the site where there are A soils, where you have that better curve number, which helps your runoff numbers. Everything east of here is terrible soils, and we're already capturing everything in there. There's nothing left to capture, basically, is what I'm saying.
So everything is going to that detention.
Right, so...
All the runoff from this whole area is running to the detention.
Yeah, oh, I don't think...
Pouring water on a full sponge, and it's going that way. If you walk up my backyard into the land behind me, it's, it's like walking on sponge.
Like, if I took this whole, if I took this detention pond and you sat over my shoulder with this hydrocater program, which is how you meet your pre and your post, and I made this pond ten times bigger, the runoff rates that it spits out would be, like, within a hundred. It does nothing, because of the type of soil it is, and because it's undeveloped currently and will be undeveloped at the end of the day. So it's a wash. You don't get credit for anything there, so.
Now, what, what's gonna happen, you said that the numbers are calculated because you're just under, not going to state regulations. What happens if you find out you're just over?
We are over, right now. Right now, in the hundred-year storm event for this site, one analysis...
No, 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 what I mean is, you're stating, you're stating right now that you don't have to rule by state regulations, because it's, what, five thousand?
You're talking about the stormwater, stormwater, um...
Yeah, the DP stormwater rules and regulations, anything two to four lots, residential, single-family, or duplexes. Uh, you're only, the statement is, "You're only subject to the standards to the maximum extent practical." You wouldn't be subject to the standards at all, I don't believe, except this is in an ACEC, which is a critical area. So they're saying, "You gotta give us something," basically, because you're in a critical area, so. Yeah. There's a lot of gray area in the standards, a lot. So, just try to manage as best we can.
And all of this, and it just, I feel I'm invested in this.
Sure.
This is my home, this is where I live. I wanna be shown on impact. I don't wanna be a bad neighbor, but I, I don't want you guys to be a bad neighbor to me, either.
Right. Oh, I understand.
Okay, so, we're looking for clarification of the drainage impact or volume.
Okay.
Which seems to me we need to continue to our next meeting and provide, and if you could get it earlier to Pat Brennan, so we can take a look at it prior to the meeting, that's helpful. We could...
Sure.
Have them weigh in on it.
Absolutely.
All right, so we need a motion to continue?
Okay.
Someone needs to make a motion. You made the motion.
The clarification.
All right. You second?
I'll second.
All right. I'll take a vote to continue. We'll continue to, what time?
Four eleven at seven thirty, same ti, same place.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Durcick?
Yes.
Sorry, out of sequence here, Mr. Durant. Mr. Fandies?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Edie?
Yes.
I also believe. Okay, we have a very patient, metalwork people here. Woodwork, sorry. Some kind of bird, but it's getting late.
There's just a site plan, um, under seat. I have their whole special permit, if you need it.
Hello, uh, thanks for the time. So we are new board members, and we actually wanted to put in new parking. Currently, the way that our road exists, it's a two-way, um, street, but if people are parked along the side of the street, it turns into a one-way street. So it basically impedes traffic, and our proposal is to basically add parking, and it would dig out into the grass area. And we already spoke to the conservation here, and they said that, based on our proposal, they don't see any disturbances, like environmental disturbances.
Where, where are you proposing the parking?
Yeah, I remember, talking about that, I, it's happened a full time job, too. So, this is woodwork right here, so we have a mailbox here, and we were just going... So, this is woodlark right here, so we have a mailbox here, and we were just going to...
Oh, you wanted to, you want to add a park, parking parallel to the, to the entry road, okay.
Can I see that, please, also?
Test it around.
So, it's right here.
Okay, so just adding in?
Yep.
Just parallel park area?
Right, so it'll probably be about five feet in, and it's going to be around 80 feet long. So, we're hoping to get about six to eight.
Parking is at least eight feet wide, I believe?
Yeah, we have figured out under 10.
No, no, I think, I think our regulations for parking spaces are nine by 19, but that's, that's a...
Oh, yeah.
Full-in parking, that's, that's what our regulation is. You would also have...
This was a special permit, 351.
Right, so you'd have to modify the special permit to do that, um, which requires some plans to show what's going on, so... You'd also have to make sure the parking didn't interfere with the entry, in and out of the...
Right.
Onto 123, West Main Street?
So, it would be probably around 20 feet in from the entrance of woodlark.
Probably need to talk to the fire department, too, right?
Yeah, you might need to talk to the fire department, too, where if, if parking is blocking the road, they may be happy to see additional parking, but...
We're trying to help the fire department, because what we find is...
Could you come to the, come to the, speak, 'cause the, it's being taped, and the only thing that's picked up from the mic is from the, from the microphone.
What's happening is that people will park, you know, 'cause the, some of the houses don't have enough parking, they only have two spots. And so, when they have guests, they park along, and it makes it just one car can pass through. Then there's this little circle, you know, this little cul-de-sac-y thing.
Yeah.
And that really reduces, so that the house on the corner there, she has two children that have, that drive, she has a boyfriend, her... So, like, her kids park, and they're hanging out. We can't even, if, if there were an emergency, a car, a fire truck could never get by there, in the winter particularly, 'cause there's nowhere for the snow to go, you know? So, it becomes really tight, and what we're trying to do is, all right, her kids, obvious, they didn't think it through when they bought it, that their kids would have a license someday. So, we're trying to put some parking down there to take that, to clear the circle, so that it's more passable, for the...
Much of our posing sounds reasonable, but, um, you have, there's a process you have to go through, and you could work with...
That's why we're here.
Well, we, she, she did come in and talk to me, and I said I believe it would be a modification, but that they could get on as a discussion item and bring it to the board, so, um, I'd be happy to work with you on that.
Yeah, that'd be great, we're just trying to learn, we're both new.
Right, right.
No, it makes sense, I mean, you know?
We modified other projects, this, these develop, and you can't anticipate everything when you approve plans, so...
Do you think that this is gonna resolve the issue?
We do, we do think it will, because it's not more than that many people parking.
Yeah, and we're going to tell them, if you park in the cul-de-sac, you're getting towed, so you need to park in the appropriate spots.
Yeah, I think you just need a some, a measured plan to know exactly what you're getting for parking spaces.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you're expecting how many additional spaces?
Um, well, the gentleman, we have a guy that lives there that does paving and stuff, and he came out and he said it was 80 feet, and he said six to eight, and I was like, okay. Um, I don't know, because I don't know, I'm glad you told us, nine and a half by...
Nine by 19, as you're saying, or...
Nine by 19, so that's helpful.
If you were to stripe a parking lot, that would be the dimension.
Nine by nine, so that's very helpful, we don't know that.
Right.
So, that will...
Less people, big pickup trucks, and that's harder to parallel park.
Right, and we do have a guy that has a pickup truck, Mike, is very anxious to get more parking.
Right, right.
So... And this, we don't have to cut down any trees. By removing that strip of land, I mean, well, making it pavement, it's not gonna increase the drainage, you know, the water for the drainage that much. So, we just thought this was a good solution. You know, we're getting a deal from someone in-house doing it, and we just don't know how to do it.
You're gonna have to provide plans, so to show what you wanna do.
Yeah.
So, what do you, where would we go?
I'll talk to you about it, you can give me a call.
Perfect, excellent.
And so, then the question becomes, it's a minor modification, which doesn't need public hearing, or is it a major modification that requires a public hearing? So, the board will have to decide how they wanna approach that, so... I mean, my perspective might, it seems pretty minor.
Doesn't, seems minor, but, yeah.
It is minor. We'll be back for the major one in a couple of years, when we rip out that cul-de-sac. Like, I would love to, there's a fire hydrant there, so I'd like to reduce the footprint, but we don't have the money to do that now. But, if we reduce that circle, it would give us, even in the snow, it would give us...
Reduce the landscape. I mean, the circle has to be that size to get trucks around it.
Well, no, we wanna make it smaller, so that the circle, the, the inner circle.
Yeah.
So, right now, it's like a fire hydrant, some scrap pine trees, and this, whatever they planted there, it's not very attractive. So, what I'd love to do is cut down the trees, reduce the inside circle, make it more pleasing, you know, with plants and color.
And just pave, you know, increase the pavement?
And pave it, so that we have a wider circle, 'cause, I don't know, it's pretty tight, no matter what, you know?
Most of the garbage trucks run over it, you see tire tracks all over the inside circle.
Yeah, it's just, it's just not well thought out.
But that's a later time, right?
Yeah, that's gonna be a couple of years, we have to save up for that, so...
Okay.
All right, so, we could, the board could decide if this is a major or minor, and I'm here, what I'm hearing is, uh, that the board feels that this would be a minor modification.
I would agree.
Excellent.
Okay, so you could work with Tabitha and send...
Perfect.
On what you need to do procedurally to get before the board.
All right.
That sounds perfect. Thank you so much.
Thanks for your patience.
Thanks for your patience.
Yes, thank you.
That was a marathon meeting.
Yeah.
I do wanna say, that gentleman with the landscaping, he is right about the pine trees, 'cause we're dealing, things are a nightmare, and I guess today, and I wish that we had what he, if he wants to, but I do understand they need a while.
All right, we still have a few items on our agenda we need to take care of, um, which includes...
Planning board business?
Planning board business and policy. One item I just wanna bring up is that the first meeting of the new board will not have any officers left over from the old board, 'cause there's chair and vice-chair, and the, you know, it'll be here, so...
Who's Ed vice-chair, or Pat's vice-chair?
Yeah, it's vice-chair, and Chris was, was the secretary, clerk, I'm sorry. So, there's no, someone has to run the first meeting. So, um, just before, one thing before, I later just wanna have somebody in place as an interim chair, just to hold that first meeting and get the new board established, so...
Now, who's been here the longest?
I was looking to Joe, so he, he has seniority.
Well, the, the first order of business is just name a chairman, so whoever's gonna be interim is all of three minutes.
Someone has to, right, right. Someone has to make that first stake, someone has to get the, open the meeting and get the ball rolling, so...
I can, I think I can handle that.
You can handle that, okay, so we have an interim chair.
I was losing sleep over it.
Oh, jeez.
A little nervous about what's happening.
Never mind, let me think about it.
Okay, um, so that's all I have, a plenty more business and policy, so... Unless somebody else, there's something else I need to bring up.
Although something else occurs to me. We're meeting next week, elections the following week, town meetings...
May.
Right, but that's, so, so we will not have a meeting after this next one, until when?
That's a question.
Right, well, so...
So, someone is going to have to, we won't have a chairman to render the report to town meeting.
Right, someone will have to, someone will have to do that, too, as interim, but the, the, well, I know, Tabitha's...
I just committed for, I committed to three minutes.
Well, Tabitha's prepared a r, report, but to be honest, the only report rendered at town meeting that I've ever done is to provide a, a tally of the vote, and, and what the vote was.
And a unanimous, or a...
Yeah, I know, it's like, you know, we held a meeting on next date.
Yeah.
Six board members voted, you know, like six to zero in favor, or opposition, whatever the vote was, on this article, and that's the only report I've ever given to town, to the town moderator personally. Tabitha's very prepared, we have a written report to the Board of Selectmen also, so there's, there's information there, but the only report, really, is the bo, report of the vote.
So, that, but, that's part of the...
And issues.
That's part of the, part of the interim. Unless...
The judge is gonna do that, too.
Unless something gets you, right? So...
Um, but as far as meetings after town meetings, that was your question?
No, I just, there was, there, my point was, there was, there are no meetings between next week's meeting and town...
And town meetings, so then, right, so then the next...
We could technically have a meeting on...
So, May 1st, or, yeah, May 2nd, there's not a meeting.
There's not?
There, there could be a meeting on May 2nd.
There could be.
That's, that's the first Tuesday, no, that's a Wednesday, no, that's, I'm looking at, look at the wrong month. Yeah, May 2nd is a Tuesday.
First Tuesday.
The first Tuesday, so if the meetings are first and third, then that'll be the 2nd and 16th for May.
Correct.
So, maybe, maybe the board needs to set meetings for May, at least, get them on the calendar. And then that would absolve you of the, the need to be interim at town meeting.
Father chooseer.
But typically, it's first and third, so...
So, we'd be switching that?
Should be 2nd and 16th?
No.
Oh, the, okay.
Second and 16th, right.
We typically meet the first, it's in the month.
That, at this point, that's feasible, so...
We're thrown off this month, 'cause of elections and...
Right.
Our meeting April 25th, and, or the second meeting is, and the town meeting is May 8th, and town elections April 25th.
Correct, thank you, Peter. Correct, thank you.
It's up here.
So, May 2nd and 16th, I think, are feasible?
Mm-hmm.
Same time? That's agreeing with those dates.
Easy for him, easy for him to say. All right, so at least you have one set, and then, when the new board is set up, you can...
It'll be a nice light meeting.
Decide where, where to go from there.
Okay.
All right, we have, um...
We'll be meeting April 11th next week, May 2nd, and May 16th.
Correct. So, you just have to remember, whoever's elected you to the board, you have to get sworn in prior to the meeting. Otherwise, you can't be on the board until you're sworn in, so...
Okay.
Okay, um, so we have, uh, just get the two minutes out of the way here, if we can. Hopefully, people have heard of it in advance. And bills also, you have to do this.
Are you doing tables?
I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna make a motion, minutes of January 12, 2016. I was the only one here for that meeting, so I reviewed them earlier. Technically can't make a motion, but, as chair, but I think in this case, this is the, if there's a role of necessity. So, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 12, 2016. Have any modifications, but someone has to second.
Second.
Others could vote present, I guess, so, um, I'll take them all. Now, Mr. Grant?
Present.
Mr. Jurassic?
Present.
Present. Present.
Mr. Beatty?
Present.
I will vote yes. And then we have the minutes for March 7th. Those are the same, it's just, I'll take yours, because it has a signature age. I'll look all around. Page three, the last paragraph, midway down on the right, it says, "There will be some testimony of the public neighbors about," I think that's a typo, that's meant to be hours?
Horus.
That's hours, is the hours of operation for the facility, I think we're talking about.
Oh, horse.
Horus, the Egyptian...
Yeah, hours.
Hours.
Horse.
As opposed to Egyptian gods. Page 10, second paragraph. Says, "Attorneys to the next criteria is having at least four inches of graded," the typo, graded gravel. And then, fourth, sort of paragraph up, it's one sentence ago. Ms. Sarah said that more than 5,000 square feet would need a variance for the well, that could be wetlands fill, not well.
And just for clarification, Tabitha, on page 7, in some cases, Mr. Larson's name is corrected with an O, and in other cases, it's not?
Yep.
Just, I, I assume that they should all be one or the other, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Minor as that is, but...
That's all I had for...
I move to approve the minutes of March 7th, 2017, with the recommended changes as stated.
Second.
My motion, second, I'll think about that. Durant?
Yes.
Jurassic?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
I also, well, yes. And then the last item we have is the bills and warrants. So, someone can read it while I sign this.
Payroll, payroll for February the 8th was $3,214,042 for Courtney Salvier, increasing the hours from 16 and a half hours a week to 18 hours a week. And we have a $53,020 for W.B. Mason for general office supplies, for a total of $3,267.62.
Okay, done motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, I'll tell you all then.
Yes.
Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Mr. Jurassic?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
I also, yes. I believe that is our agenda for this evening, unless somebody has anything else they want to add. Hearing nothing, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Removed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Stand adjourned at, uh...
10:03 PM.
Thank you, very precise. Good thing you're letting us know that.
And, easy on the eyes.
Nice to meet you as well.
Yes.
He does it anyway.